You're watching Jaxps PBS More, WJCT Jacksonville.
Oh, it was me.
Cat's paw.
Cat's paw.
Apparently my dog.
Okay, my computer is not on.
The School Board of the Duval County School District has now convened in its regular monthly meeting. To everyone present and to our television viewers, I wish to extend a warm welcome to the meeting of the Duval County School Board. The vision statement of the Duval County School Board states, "Every student is inspired and prepared for success in college or a career and life." The mission statement of the Duval County School Board is to provide educational excellence in every school and every classroom for every student, every day. The Duval County School Board is here tonight to listen to reports from district staff and to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement. We will also address budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and other business items that require a vote of the Board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the Board to make managerial or operational decisions. The Board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. If items appear to move quickly, it is because the Board meets in an agenda committee meeting prior to the Board meeting for an in-depth review of all agenda items. The committee meeting for the June 1st, 2021, School Board meeting will be held on May 18th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m., and the public is invited to attend. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the Board during our public comments portion of the Board meeting, please note that we will accept speaker cards until 6:20 p.m. In an effort to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19, we have placed hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes at the podium. We ask that each speaker wipe down the microphone and podium before you address the Board. The CDC currently recommends that facial coverings are worn while in public settings. Therefore, we recommend that all attendees wear a facial covering during today's meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. Board members, I invite you to stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have our school presentation from District 6. I'd like to invite Principal Tushov from Joseph Stillwell Military Academy of Leadership.
Good evening, good evening, members of the School Board and community members. It's an honor to be here and showcase my middle school, Joseph Stillwell Military Academy of Leadership, known informally as J Small. Thank you, Dr. Green, for trusting me to lead this incredible school. Thank you, Board Member Joyce, for inviting me here tonight to share it. My name is Tamara Tushov, and I'm the very proud principal of this fantastic middle school right here in Duval County. We are home to 670 middle school cadets in grades 6 through 8. We are located in the Rolling Hills subdivision on the west side, just south of I-10 and west of I-295. As the name of the school implies, we are a military-themed middle school. General Joseph Stillwell was a highly decorated soldier and a graduate of West Point. It is no coincidence that this school is located on Burma Street. Though in World War II, he led an expedition through Burma that allowed China to receive much-needed supplies that were previously cut off by the Japanese. Like other public schools, we offer a comprehensive and challenging curriculum designed to meet the needs of our diverse students from all over Duval County. We have core courses ranging from our most challenging advanced courses to our more supportive intensive courses in reading and math. Those who meet our prerequisites can take up to seven high school courses and one college course by the time they finish the eighth grade. Cadets at J Small can enjoy a full range of opportunities in athletics and a variety of clubs and activities. Unlike other public middle schools, all our cadets wear a military-themed uniform. Reciting the pledge is not optional in my school. Cadets take leadership courses rich in military traditions each year they attend J Small. We also measure our cadets' physical development in tandem with their physical fitness class. Lastly, we honor veterans, current and past, in two annual ceremonies, Veterans Day and Memorial Day. My goal is that each cadet will be high school-ready in each core subject and leave with a patriotic spirit and an appreciation for all service members who currently serve or who have served in our great military. This mission is personal for me. I wore a uniform for 15 years, four years in the United States Army Reserve, four years as a cadet at West Point, and seven years as an Army officer. I never thought I would leave the military, but in my last assignment, I was assigned to the University of Florida in their ROTC program as a military science instructor in the mid-'90s. It was in this position I found my calling. I wanted to teach and coach young people, so in 1997, I left the military in search of my first 6-12 teaching position. Fast forward to 2019, I was offered this position to lead the only military magnet school in the state. I was never a decorated war hero. In fact, while I served, to use a sports analogy, I sat the bench, waiting for a call to deploy. But in hindsight, I was fortunate. That call did not come. The Army was so good to me over those 15 years of training, leadership education, and experiences that I feel deeply compelled to give back to this country. In this school, I have the opportunity to do just that. I can think of no greater honor than to inspire children to appreciate or even join our great military. Now, I'd like you to hear from my cadets and my cadre in this short video. Thank you, Dr. Pierce, Ms. Pierre, and Mr. Begon for putting this video together. Thank you. Go Army! Beat Navy! That was from Mr. Stoles.
We give that question a lot about if you guys are military cadets, you're all over the kids, all you do is learn and do what you're supposed to do. We teach them about care, teach them about finance, we teach them about life.
I think it benefits them because they gain self-discipline and self-confidence, and I think that that's important. Those are two things that they are carrying with them for the rest of their lives.
Some of the kids need structure in their lives, and then, once they get into that format, they can find that they can accomplish.
I think that we have a variety of things to offer. We offer higher credits, we have continuity to SAT and Paxon and all of the other things, and then a different leadership style. They figure out, what is your leadership style?
We have several programs, robotics, Legos, things like that. We are just a few different solo people outside of the regular four classes.
And as we all know, physical readiness, as far as keeping ourselves healthy, is a big deal in society, you know? By doing PT out there, physical training, running along with them, I think it helps them build into better character.
It teaches you endurance and that you need to work harder on yourself and make yourself better.
They're very hands-on and give you a job and give you a chance. They all have a bright side.
I think the dress code is awesome, and I think it's a really good school because it teaches you a lot of the military.
When you come here, you can earn honor and respect for yourself, and people look at you and have respect for you.
Their government foundation, they're going to be successful, not only in the school, but in high school, college, and after college, and their everyday life.
What they're given in life skills, no matter what situation, they can be leaders. No matter what school they go to from here, they will be able to flourish because they give you tools that are going to help them in their future.
I would love to have Board Member Joyce share a few words if she'd like.
Well, I know my fellow Board members know this. I'd like for the public to know this school is near and dear and dear to my heart. When I began teaching there several years ago, we were a turnaround school. And when I left to come and be on the Board in 2018, we were a B. This magnet program and the outstanding leadership that this school has seen over the last several years has really propelled it. I think it's a hidden gem, and I just encourage everyone that's watching to go check it out if you have a rising middle schooler. It is a, it's a program that I, I love, I helped build, and my, my last, I have five children, my last baby went there for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, and just, he said those were the best years of his life. And so, thank you, Ms. Tushov, for your leadership. It's such, I've seen Ms. Tushov, and I want to say this really fast, I've seen Ms. Tushov out there, when they do PT, she's running with them, and she does push-ups with them, and she doesn't expect anybody to do anything that she's not going to do herself. And I think it's a team effort, and I think everyone on the faculty and staff feel that way. They would never ask anybody to do some, any student to do anything they wouldn't do. And so, thank you for your leadership, and again, it's, I think it's the gem of the west side.
Thank you so much, Board Member Joyce, and thank you again. We love having our presentation of schools and learning more and more about all that is great in Duval County. This evening, we'll go ahead and turn it over to presentations, and we have a couple of proclamations and then some recognitions. And our first proclamation this evening is near and dear to my heart, because as, as some know, in addition to serving on the Board, I'm also a licensed mental health counselor, and the month of May has been designated as Mental Health Awareness Month. This week happens to be Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, so in honor of this, I'd like to invite Ms. Vicki Pierre to read our first proclamation this evening.
And here tonight, in recognition of the reading of this proclamation from the Office of Student Discipline and Support Services, is Executive Director Jackie Simmons, Director Katrina Taylor, and Mental Health Support Specialist Johnisha Addison. Mental Health Awareness Month 2021 Proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. Now therefore, may it be resolved that the Duval County School Board now hereby proclaims May 2021 as Mental Health Month in Duval County Public Schools. The School Board also calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Jacksonville, Florida to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions, signed this fourth day of May 2021.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pierre and the Behavioral Health and Mental Health Team. Each year, millions of Americans face the reality of living with mental illness, and during the month of May, I personally want to encourage everyone to join the national movement to raise awareness about mental health. We continue to learn more from research about the importance of tending to our emotional and mental well-being in order to live healthy, fulfilled, and productive lives, not only for ourselves, but for one another and the society around us. And we can each work to fight the stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for policies to support people with mental illness as well as their families. If you or someone you know is struggling with a mental health concern, you can call 1-800-273-TALK, and please know that you're not alone. As we continue to move through a global pandemic, many of us have had struggles, so please use this month as a reminder to focus on the healing value of connecting in safe ways, prioritizing your own mental health and self-care, and acknowledging that sometimes it's okay not to be okay. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation for teacher appreciation.
Teacher Appreciation Week 2021 Proclamation. Whereas teachers and paraprofessionals are the foundation of public education and are an indispensable part of Duval County Public Schools, and whereas our educators consistently go above and beyond the call of duty in not only providing quality instruction to countless students, but also in serving as unofficial mentors, counselors, and role models, and whereas in spite of the many new procedures and protocols implemented in response to the coronavirus pandemic, our educators have maintained an unwavering dedication to the profession and to our students, whether in person or online, and whereas our educators are not only impacting students in the classroom, but they're also contributing to the long-term success of our community and future generations. Now therefore, may it be resolved that the Duval County School Board joins the rest of this country in proclaiming Monday, May 3rd through Friday, May 7th, 2021, as Teacher Appreciation Week, and we strongly encourage all members of the community to express their appreciation for teachers and paraprofessionals for their hard work, signed this fourth day of May 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Pierre. Let's be honest, this school year has been weird, probably the most challenging year that any of us have ever experienced, but we're getting through it in part due to our amazing educators. We know that teachers change the lives of millions of children every day, and in a year where teaching has been anything but normal, their immense work and impact have provided a much-needed sense of community and connection for all of us. So despite the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic, educators across Duval County have been working hard to ensure that every student has the tools they need to reach their full potential, and I think I can safely speak for the Board when I say, "Thank you so much. We appreciate you and enjoy this week." Moving on to our recognitions, Ms. Pierre.
Every hero needs a squad. Those are the words of the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, or LLS, in reference to Hero Squad, which is a philanthropic program that enables schools and students to raise funds towards its mission. Thanks to the generosity of the Team Duval community, you can say we've reached hero status. To explain more, here is a brief video from the LLS.
Hello, everyone. My name is Karen from Indiana. I'm a community and development manager for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Youth Initiative here in the North Florida region. I am joining you today to first of all say thank you. Thank you for supporting the Hero Squad program, previously called Transgressions. Your school's participation is moving us closer to cancer heroes and to help support patients and their families. I am also here to congratulate Duval County Public Schools on being awarded the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society's National Hero Award for the 2019-2020 school year. The Hero Award is a special level of recognition for top fundraising individuals, donors, and school residents. Although I wish that the winner could have attended and had over the award, it has to deliver to the schools. As a participant of this award, the district was able to choose to dedicate the fastest ways towards specific initiative. I am so excited to share that Duval County Public Schools chose the LLS Children's Initiative, which is a $100 million multi-year endeavor to take on childhood cancer from every direction, with the goal to help children not only survive their cancer, but to thrive in their life subsequently. I also am a thank all of the schools that are able to participate in that Hero Squad program this year. I know that this year has been challenging and different to say the least, but despite that, we have this incredible strength of generosity come out of these joining us. I look forward to partnering with all of you again next year. With your support, we are unstoppable on our mission to create our cancer. Thank you so very much.
And as Ms. Nagy mentioned in her video, the award was sent here, and we have a little bit of video of it right on your screen. Again, that's the National Hero Award for the 2019-2020 school year. Please join us in congratulating our schools and students for their work and earnings overall. They say it's their way of giving back to the students they serve daily. We now wish to recognize the winners of the Chartwells K-12 School Dining Services 12th Annual College Scholarship. Chartwells is the district's food service provider, and this year, Chartwells is awarding a one-time $2,000 scholarship to 18 Duval County Public School seniors with plans to pursue post-secondary education. We're pleased to announce this year's winners, and joining us on behalf of Chartwells is District Manager Daryl Smith and Regional Director of Operations Will Ratley, and we are going to name those students, and you'll see them pop up on the monitors above. They are Kayla Barnwell, Robert E. Lee High School, Cole Bridges, Fletcher High School, Caroline Cosby, Stanton College Prep, Amber Farrell, William M. Raines, Joshua Gillis, Fletcher, Ayana Rose Gray, Douglas Anderson School of the Arts, Ellie Haddad, Mandarin, Tia Hepburn, Sandalwood, Samaya Lee, Inglewood, Desmond McCall, Terry Parker, Vikas Patel, Stanton, Margaret Radloff, Sandalwood, Hamia Rivera, Paxson School for Advanced Studies, Julyla Sykes, Baldwin Middle High, Semher Tekel, Paxson, Curtis Thompson, Frank H. Peterson, Academies of Technology, Jordan Williams, Atlantic Coast, and Catherine Williams, Jean Ribault. Please help us congratulate these seniors in earning a Chartwells Scholarship. Now, Thompson Hospitality is a strategic partner with Chartwells in providing food service management throughout the district, so right now, we welcome Olivia Dorsey with Thompson Hospitality to share more about the Thompson Hospitality HBCU Meal Plan Scholarship.
My name's Olivia Dorsey, and I'm the Regional Vice President for Thompson Hospitality, and many of you probably already know that Thompson is a strategic partner to Chartwells. And we operate on the solo side of our business, about 21 HBCU colleges, and every year, we offer Duval County Public School, high school students that will attend a HBCU that we operate, we provide them a meal plan scholarship. So this year, we had one recipient that I am just honored to name this evening that will be receiving a mealship plan scholarship. She's going to be attending one of our HBCUs that we operate, and her name is Zandelli Osandu. I hope I pronounced that correctly, but it is with great pleasure and honor that Thompson can give back to the Duval County School public community.
Now to a member of the Team Duval community who's been named one of the 40 Most Promising Professionals in Northeast Florida. For our next presentation, we're recognizing Tia Leather for being named to the Jacksonville Business Journal's Top 40 Under 40 for 2021. Leather says this honor truly paints a picture of what it looks like when different sectors of the community work together to benefit the quality of education for all children. As the Executive Director of Family and Community Engagement, she's tasked with leading overall partnerships between the district and stakeholders ranging from business partners to faith-based partners, nonprofits, government agencies, and more. She also provides oversight for a variety of programs, including community education, the Parent Academy, the 5,000 Role Models of Excellence Project, volunteer services, and many more. But when it's all said and done, she says her work is about building authentic relationships that result in sustainable outcomes for children, like the countless parents who are being empowered as leaders, or the full-time athletic trainers who have been placed in all of our high schools, or the nonprofits working together to ensure families in need have access to school supplies, food over the weekend, and internet access, and the list goes on. She credits her own success to the village of, quote, "hard-working and excellence-expecting community she grew up around on the Jacksonville's north side," and her hope is that through her position, she can bring together groups who in turn provide that same level of support to our students. According to the journal, she was chosen among a record number of nominees, and she will be celebrated later this month, and tonight, Dr. Green wishes to honor her with a superintendent's coin of excellence. Please join us in congratulating Tia Leather for being named to this year's 40 Under 40. Our next honoree is one of only 11 educators in the entire nation to earn this award and the only recipient from the state of Florida. We're speaking of Leslie White, Secondary Science Specialist in the Office of Academic Services and winner of the Shell Urban Science Educator Development Award. This award is given by the National Science Teaching Association and is the world's largest organization dedicated to promoting excellence and innovation in science teaching and learning. This award is specific to K-12 science teachers in urban settings and who are part of underrepresented ethnic groups. White tells us her experiences as a student and educator of color are what attracted her to this opportunity. She says as a student, she rarely, if ever, saw teachers who looked like her, and she does not remember having any math or science teachers of color. Once she became a science teacher, she says she not only continued to see this trend, but also noticed some achievement gaps and places of disconnect with her students, particularly in literacy and their interest in science. With this award, she wanted access to professional development that would broaden her horizons and help improve science gains and literacy among her students. She'll not only have the opportunity to attend the NSTA National Conference on Science Education, she'll also have access to a variety of workshops and presentations. She's in her 11th year of education, was a top-five Teacher of the Year finalist last school year, and we're told she is a, quote, "phenomenal educator," and she's also being presented with a superintendent's coin of excellence. Joining Ms. White is Latricia Baker, Supervisor in Secondary Science. Please help us congratulate White in earning this award. In a situation that could have had a devastating outcome, this teacher jumped in and saved a student's life. We now wish to honor Natalie Blackburn of Sheffield Elementary for courageously performing the Heimlich maneuver on a student. It all unfolded the morning of April 14th during breakfast. The first-grade teacher says suddenly one of her students began running towards her, and another was yelling that this classmate was choking. Blackburn could clearly see this student could not breathe. She immediately had a student hit the emergency button, alerting office staff to send a nurse, and she also began performing the Heimlich. Through her actions, the food was dislodged, and the student could breathe again. In her own words, Ms. Blackburn says this, "I do not feel I was heroic at all. I was just doing my job and what I was trained for." She says it happened so fast, she just reacted, and she also adds that more often than not, teachers tend to just jump in and take care of problems without even thinking. If anything, she'd like to raise awareness and encourage other teachers to take a first aid or CPR class, even though teachers are busy, and it may be difficult to make the time. She says it truly does save lives, and giving her courageous acts, she is being presented with a superintendent's coin of excellence. Joining Ms. Blackburn is Sheffield Elementary Principal Cassandra Delay. Please help us congratulate her in recognition of her courageous actions. It's a title that only one middle school in the U.S. can claim, and that middle school is right here in Duval County. That is Alfred Dupont Middle School, recently named School of the Year by the Embassy of Spain and its representation here in the United States. This is an award that recognizes excellence in bilingual education, and Dupont is one of five Duval schools that offers a dual-language program. This gives students the opportunity to take language arts, science, math, and social studies courses in both Spanish and English. This past December, the district's ESAL department received an invitation from the Embassy of Spain to apply for this award, marking the first time the district was ever invited to participate. Applying for this award was not an easy process, but in the end, Dupont prevailed, with the embassy commending the school not only for its commitment to bilingual and bicultural education, but also for producing strong academic results. With this win, Dupont walks away with many impressive gifts, including grants for professional training, bilingual books and resources, and one week of training at the prestigious University of Salamanca in Spain for one staff member. Here with us from Dupont Middle are Principal Marilyn Barnwell, Principal Marilyn Barnwell, as well as the dual-language team, Teachers Avette Brittenbaugh, Jessica Sotomayor, Amber Jackson, Beth Zeta de Villaresto, Megan Riggs, and PR Professional Amarilis Rivera Cordero. And from ESAL, our Executive Director Ingrid Kerias, K-12 Dual-Language Specialists Claudia Noraez, and Bailey Henderson Espinoza. Please join us in congratulating Dupont for this award. It's clear that their talent is without argument. For our final presentation, we celebrate three Fletcher Middle School students recently recognized at the state level for their skills in speech and debate. Their eighth grader, Robert Trineer, and seventh graders Abigail Erlinson and Kalen Gilbert. What makes this feat even more impressive is that this is the very first year Fletcher Middle School's Speech and Debate Team has been in existence. This all comes thanks to the Florida Civics and Debate Initiative and grant money, giving more students access to speech and debate programs. Fletcher students have been participating in tournaments all year, culminating with the state championship on March 31. It was there that Kalen Gilbert placed second in the Program Oral Interpretation category, which she did on Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream." Abigail Erlinson placed third in the state in the same category, which she did on Villains and Why She Likes Them. And finally, Robert Trineer placed sixth in the state in the Lincoln-Douglas Debate category, and the topic was whether the U.S. should provide universal childcare. This was all done virtually, with Robert participating in live arguments, and Abigail and Kalen submitting prerecorded speeches. In addition to participating in this initiative, these students have also participated in the Florida Forensic League Tournament, even competing against high school students. Robert could not make it this evening, but we're joined by Kalen and Abigail, and by the way, all students will be getting a superintendent's coin of excellence. Here also from Fletcher Middle are Speech and Debate Coach, Civics Teacher Kimberly Price, as well as Principal Chelsea Matthews, and also with them is District Supervisor and K-12 Social Studies Erin Conklin. Please join us in congratulating these students on earning state wins through the Florida Civics and Debate Initiative.
I would like to add that this is the first year, the inaugural year of the Civics Debate for the state of Florida. We had two schools that were accepted and the grant, so this is extra special that Duval County Schools produced the first winners of the Civics Debate Club in the state of Florida.
This concludes this evening's presentations.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to everyone for all of those wonderful recognitions and honors, for saving lives. Good work happening around here. All right, moving on to approval of the May 4, 2021 Agenda. That the Duval County School Board approved the May 4, 2021 Agenda, as submitted on April 27, 2021 with the following change. Communications Fletcher Middle School Debate State Winners, item added. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved by Board Member Joyce, seconded by Board Member Jones. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote.
Madam Chair, that item passed 7-0.
Thank you so much. All right. Typically, this is when I do the Chair Report, but given that it's Mental Health Awareness Month, and as a board member and a licensed mental health counselor, I wanted to take some liberty this evening. It's been a priority for me to ensure that the district is working toward proactive solutions for educating and supporting social, emotional, and mental health for all of our students and staff. I know that together, we can realize the shared vision of a community where anyone affected by mental illness can get this appropriate support and quality of care to live their best life, whether they're young or old, rich or poor, and where no one feels alone in their struggle. I'm grateful to Dr. Green and the DCPS staff, along with many of our community partners that work hard to bring this vision to life here in our district. In my private practice, I often remind people that I have the opportunity to help, that finding and maintaining mental wellness takes practice. It's tough to score in the middle of a game without conditioning and practice before you get on the court or the field, and so, it's the same with mental health. We need to develop a practice to take care of our own mental health. So, with that being said, I've asked Director of School Behavioral Health Services, Ms. Katrina Taylor, to guide us through a calm classroom exercise this evening, and to tell us a little bit more about what the district is doing to support mental health. Ms. Taylor, welcome.
Thank you, Board Chair Anderson. This evening, we're going to go through a calm classroom exercise. Just a little bit about calm classroom. Duval County Public Schools have been implementing calm classroom for the last four to five years. Over this past year, we implemented calm classroom in 107 DCPS elementary schools. So, all of our elementary schools in the district are implementing calm classroom with fidelity this school year. It started last school year. So, the exercise that we're going to practice this evening is called "Breathe Peace In, Breathe Peace Out." We're going to learn how to practice breathe peace in, breathe peace out. Think about what it's like to be peaceful. As we breathe in through our noses, we will breathe in peace. As we breathe out through our noses, we will breathe peace out. Okay, let's get started. Feel your feet flat on the floor. Sit up straight and comfortably in your chair. Relax your shoulders up and down. Close your eyes. Think about what it is like to feel peaceful. Now, as you breathe in through your nose, breathe peace in. As you breathe out through your nose, breathe peace out. Breathe in through your nose. Breathe out through your nose. Breathe in through your nose. Breathe out through your nose. Breathe peace in through your nose. Breathe peace out through your nose. Breathe peace in through your nose and breathe peace out through your nose. Continue on your own. Now, taking a big, deep breath. Breathe out slowly. Notice how you feel. Now, slowly, open your eyes. This is what our elementary students get to do every day, at least two to three times a day. Calm classroom takes about three to five minutes to implement. What we've seen with calm classroom strategies has helped students to be more at peace, and we've also seen that students are a lot more calm, and they're able to be productive throughout the day. So, we're very excited about schools being able to implement calm classroom. As Board Chair Anderson stated, this month is Mental Health Awareness Month. So, last week, we were able to begin, do a mental health kickoff event last week with our Student Mental Health Conference. We've implemented this conference for the past six years, if you don't know. I know that some of the board members attended when we were face-to-face, and so, we implemented this conference six years ago. For the last few years, we've been implementing it virtually because of COVID. So, this year, we had over 1,000 teachers, high school teachers, to stream the conference to their students in their classroom, which we thought was a huge feat. So, we're very excited about that. So, we roughly, we did the math, we had roughly about 30,000 students that saw, were exposed to the conference this past week. We also had our inaugural Educator Wellness Conference. That was our first time implementing that conference this past week, and those events were our kickoff events for Mental Health Awareness Month. These are just some picks because we did have some of our partners through Baptist and Partnership for Child Health that donated, as well as Kids Hope Alliance, that donated funding for us to purchase swag bags for the students. So, as you can see, the swag bags were a hit, especially the green glasses. They really love those. And these are just some students from Wilson High School, as well as some of our students from DA. So, just to give you a little bit of information about what we have going on throughout the month of May, this is Mental Health at a Glance. There's something that we have going on every single week through the month of May. The purpose of us having these events throughout the month is to increase mental health awareness, also to break stigma, and to also provide resources to our community and our schools, because people don't know what we have in our schools a lot of times. So, we wanted to raise awareness as relates to mental health resources that we have within our school building. So, as you can see, we have so many great resources. Our first week, we asked that this week is Children's Mental Health Week. So, Thursday, if you don't know, is National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. So, we're asking everyone to wear green on Thursday. And so, we, like I said, we have events that's going on every week throughout the month of May. We also have a PSA contest, an art PSA contest for our elementary students, and a video PSA contest for our secondary students. This year's theme around the PSA contest is COVID and Mental Health. We want to know how students maintain their mental wellness by going through COVID. And that is all I have for you today. Thank you so much for this opportunity, Board Chair Anderson.
Thank you so much, Ms. Taylor. I am always impressed with the work that your department is doing, and very grateful that we afford these opportunities to our students. So, thank you, thank you, Dr. Green, for supporting these programs. That is all then, since I am yielding my floor, the floor. Superintendent, your report this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm also yielding most of my time to a department report, but I do want to share just two slides. Every month, I've continued to share where we are as it relates to the COVID-19 trends in the district. As you can see, we are starting to inch our way back up with cases, but we have pretty much maintained within our, with our instructional employee group around the same level where we were towards the beginning of the school year. One of the things we are working on, we are now working with the Department of Health on the COVID-19 Pfizer vaccine for students. Today, students 16 years or older are eligible. However, they must have a parent or guardian present with them if they want to receive the vaccine. We are working with them with one of our local high schools to pilot it at that high school so that families will know which high school we're offering, and then, we will work with the Department of Health of how we can partner. You've probably heard that maybe next week, that they'll, the Pfizer will be available for students 12 and up. We will continue to work with the Department of Health, and if we are able to offer an opportunity for our students to get shots at our schools, we're going to continue to work with DOH to make that happen. So, with that, I would like to turn it over to Gail Roberts, the Executive Director of Exceptional Student Education. With this being Teacher Appreciation Week, we thought it would be a great opportunity to focus on our teachers who teach in most unique situations with everything from inclusion with our Gen Ed teachers to self-contained pride unit and everything in between. ESE students are about six, I'm going to hope I got there, about 17,000 of our students are ESE?
Twenty.
Oh, okay, I'm about 4,000 short. ESE students. So, it is a very large population that it's very important for us to ensure that we have the best, not only teachers in front of them, but the best resources that we can possibly offer them. So, I'm going to now turn it over to Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Dr. Green, and thank you for all your support. I have marvelous Matt doing my... Good evening, Honorable Board Members. Tonight, it's my privilege to showcase the district's exceptional student education programs. Our district's expression, "we have that," definitely describes our exceptional student education or ESE programs. We are proud to have students with disabilities in all of our schools across the continuum of delivery models, depending on the individual needs of the students. Regardless of the educational setting, our students with disabilities have access to high-quality, rigorous instruction on general education or access point standards, leading to a standard diploma. You will see from the programs and supports I share with you tonight that through our specially-designed instruction and related services, we are committed to preparing our students with disabilities for college, career, employment, and life. Our ESE programs address the needs of the whole child. Our individual education program teams, or IEP teams, consider the needs of a student across each of these domains. Some of our students require services in only one of these domains, while others receive direct services in all five areas. Regardless of the educational placement or exceptionality category, IEP teams can determine that students require one or more of these related services. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, requires that students with disability be served in the least restrictive environment. Our district embraces this requirement and is committed to our inclusive practices. We believe students with disabilities add to the rich diversity of our schools. Eighty-three percent of our students in ESE are served in general education classrooms with their non-disabled peers more than 80% of the school day. I'm pleased to share that Duval County has the highest rate of inclusion compared to the other very large Florida districts. Students with disabilities in inclusive settings can receive direct in-class support and/or consultation from varying exceptionality teachers and have access to related services. We know that the increase in our graduation rate and our improved grade-level proficiency for students with disabilities are the direct result of our effective inclusive practices. Some of our students with disabilities need highly specialized services throughout the school day to meet their unique learning differences. We call these settings low-incidence programs. The focus of our low-incidence program is to strategically align services to student need, not just by their eligibility category or label. As you will see in the next several slides, that when it comes to offering programs that educate the whole child, yes, we have that. yes, we have that. To assure our low-instance programs utilize evidence-based best practices, the district developed quality indicators for each of the settings. The quality indicators drive our professional development activities, support our instructional coaching, and provide school-based educators with the look-for tool when conducting instructional walks. The quality program indicators are also aligned to the teacher evaluation rubric. Research is clear that early intervention is the key to improved outcomes for students with disabilities. Our district begins early intervention by serving eligible students with disabilities on their third birthday. The pre-K curriculum includes intentional instruction designed to meet the academic, social, emotional, and communication needs of the students. Our district offers a full continuum of services for our pre-K students with disabilities through settings ranging from itinerant ESE teachers who provide support in community daycares and preschools to specialized day support services. Next, I want to share the amazing learning opportunities happening in our participatory and supported-level classrooms. Students in PLA and SLA have rigorous instruction on functional academics, communication, and social skills to maximize independent functioning. DCPS also uses the MOVE program, which stands for Mobility Opportunities Via Education. This program is designed to improve mobility skills of sitting, standing, walking, and transitioning, leading to improved health independence, dignity, and inclusive, community inclusion. Our own Neptune Beach Elementary has earned the distinction of being a MOVE international model site. Communication Social Skills, or CSS, is another low-incident setting, program setting, for students with autism or related disabilities. Since Autism Spectrum Disorder is the fastest-growing ESE program eligibility category, it is essential that the instruction is based on current, relevant research, and effective practices. When you enter a CSS classroom, you see an environment rich with visual supports, individualized sensory programs, focused social skills instruction, positive behavior interventions, and systematic instruction in communication. Itinerant teachers of visually impaired and orientation and mobility specialists provide support to students with visual impairments across all service delivery models. They provide instruction that focuses on navigating the school and community, accessing curriculum, Braille instruction, self-advocacy, and independent living. Duval County is also proud to offer two different types of elementary programs for students who are deaf or hard of hearing. The Auditory Spoken Language Program places emphasis on auditory comprehension of language and verbal expression, while the Total Communication Program embraces similar concepts and adds American Sign Language and other visuals to include, to increase the support to students who are deaf or hard of hearing. Behavior Supports and the Pride Academy are specialized classrooms designed to support students in regulating emotion and developing appropriate social skills. The program features a lower student-to-teacher ratio with additional support staff and onsite therapeutic counselors. Students participate in social skills instruction infused throughout the day with structured point and level behavior systems. The staff are trained in trauma-informed care strategies and crisis intervention techniques. Our exceptional student centers are magical places filled with dedicated staff supporting students who are working diligently on their goals. If you had not had the opportunity to visit one of our center schools, I really encourage you to stop by. Our center schools serve only students with disabilities and offer the most intensive specialized instruction and related services to meet the complex needs of the students they serve. All activities focus on providing the skills necessary to become an active, responsible, and productive member to their community. Our Home Hospital Program provides virtual and/or face-to-face instruction in home hospitals and facilities for students who are unable to attend school due to medical or psychiatric conditions. The last program I want to share with you tonight is the Postgraduate Transition Program for our students ages 18 to 22. Students with disabilities who complete their high school program of study can defer the receipt of their diploma if the IEP team determines that they need, they have a need for transition services. When it comes to transition options, boy, we have that. The district provides an array of options for transition services, which include supported participation in FSCJ, supported employment opportunities in the community, career and technical certifications, project search internships at UNF, school-based enterprises, instruction in independent living, and individualized programs to meet the specific needs of a student. What a better finale to a presentation showcasing our program than to celebrate the accomplishments of one of our amazing students, Abigail Jones. Many of you recall that Dr. Green served as a substitute in a classroom at Neptune Beach Elementary in November and spent the day with Abby and her classmates. We are privileged to have Abby's incredible teacher Pamela Levine, Mary Lou Darcy, ESE lead teacher, and Principal Kavanaugh here with us tonight. Thank you for representing the team of professionals that support Abby's many accomplishments. Please stand and be recognized for everything you do every day for our students and their families. They also come bearing gifts from Abby and her classmates, for you, Dr. Green. We were also hoping to introduce you to Abby and her family, but unfortunately, they were unable to join us this evening. However, I'm pleased to share a wonderful video created by Abby's mother. I will conclude my presentation with this video celebrating Abby's many successes and her mother's appreciation for the educational team at Neptune Beach Elementary.
Hi, Duval County School Board. This is Abby, and I'm Abby's mom, Erica. We wish we could be there tonight, especially Abby. She would be waving and saying hi to all of you. But we are home. Abby is five years old. She's a kindergarten year old, and this is Levine's class at Neptune Beach Elementary. This is her second year with Levine. We are so thankful to be a part of this wonderful school system and the wonderful community of Neptune Beach. Abby was born with Down Syndrome. But the biggest surprise to us was that she was born with a very large brain tumor along the left side of her brain. So we were actually given a terminal diagnosis for Abby. She was never supposed to live to be five years old. But here she is, five, and quite a five-year-old. And we still have challenges due to her medical complexities. It never ceases to surprise us. But this girl is full of life and full of joy. Yeah, we're tiring. And her name actually means father's joy. We knew before she was born that she was gonna have a joyful spirit and that she was gonna bring just love and light to everyone that she encountered. And then she does. She has a way of telling people, like, you know, the guy I've never met before. She is a very special little girl. We are very proud of her. She is very determined. She works extremely hard, and she has a fantastic team at Neptune Beach to help her do all the things that she needs to do. She's still learning how to stand independently, how to walk independently. And her therapy team is working diligently with her every single week, all of those skills. She's learning words, she's learning words, almost a new word every week. She has a fantastic language therapist who's working with her, along with Miss Levine and then the parents in her class, with her, Miss P, and Miss Alp and Miss Anne. They all help her to do everything that all the other kids are able to do in their class. Even though Abby takes extra time and might need extra help, she gives the participation to do all the statements. Abby loves school. She loves her classmates. She has tons of friends. She's very special. Her favorite things involve music and dancing. And she can't wait to get back to the classroom. Once we're done, we need to go back at home, right? Does Abby, what do you say to all of her friends? You say bye-bye? Yes, they will see you soon. Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight. We appreciate everything you do for those who go to school and the kids in their community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Dr. Green, did you have any final parting comments?
As you can see, Abigail is a beautiful little five-year-old, very rambunctious. And her team, her teacher, the pair of professionals. Abby is one of, I believe, seven students in the class. And they are there to help them not only just learn basic skills, but they are also teaching them academic skills. As you heard, Abigail's learning a new word every week. And so I just wanted to recognize Ms. Levine and thank her for allowing me to be a pair professional for the day in her classroom. And Ms. Kavanaugh is amazing. The other therapists, the support therapists that are there, they are amazing. And it's just one example of, as Ms. Roberts says, we have that, that we have the programs and the resources to support all of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Green. I've had the opportunity to visit Neptune Beach and their unit several times, obviously, as they're in District Two. And the work that you all do there is hero's work. Thank you so much for supporting our babies. It takes a village, and that village is tight and doing great work. So thank you very much. It's exciting to recognize so much of District Two this evening. So without further ado, we have 43 public speaker cards tonight. Typically, we will have our student representative from JAGs speak after public comment. But because this might be a lengthy evening, I'd like to invite Adam DiMascio, another District Two representative from Fletcher High School, to share with us this evening some comments. Good evening, Mr. DiMascio.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. For those of you who may not know, I act as the student representative for Duncan Fletcher High School in the Beeches area. And as a student liaison, I just thought it would be pertinent to give a recap of the events of our last JAGs meeting so we can have a better idea of how to help both our students and administrators moving forward. With that said, this is what I have prepared. To Chairwoman Elizabeth Anderson, the Honorable School Board members, and Superintendent Diana Green, my name is Adam DiMascio, and I am currently a senior at Duncan U. Fletcher High School. I thank you all for your time and consideration of the issues that remain pertinent to both the students and administrators across Duval County Public Schools. To this end, I would like to extend special thanks to Mr. Byron Copeland and the Honorable Charlotte Joyce for taking the time out of their schedules to engage with my fellow students and I at the last JAGs meeting, specifically to discuss the issues concerning our district's dress code. Based upon the tone of the dialogue of that evening, I cannot responsibly beat around the bush with regards to this issue. The current state of the Duval County Public School Dress Code promotes subjective enforcement that is inequitable at best and sexist at worst. Of the eight express conditions under which an article of clothing can be banned, four of them directly target female students. This is done under the guise of preventing promiscuity in the learning environment or providing some sort of quote-unquote "protection" for the female students from the leering eyes of young men that our society swears are inherently sexually predatory. But in the face of this precedent, I ask this question. Why is the onus not placed upon our young men to not harass their fellow students for the clothes they wear? Furthermore, when administrators pull female students out of class for the abhorrent offense of showing half an inch of midriff, chastising them publicly, as I myself have witnessed several times, this is not only disruptive to the productive learning environment, but perpetuates the same ideas of body negativity that have plagued our young American women for generations. How can you expect the coming generation of young women to express confidence in themselves and their abilities when our educational institutions push a narrative that is diametrically opposed to such an idea? The dress code presently references the idea that all clothes worn on school grounds should be done with the intent of self-respect. But when our onsite administrators are given the final say as to who gets dress coded and who does not, self-respect seems to be discarded in favor of administrator respect. This cannot continue. When we publicly shame our students for wearing the same outfits that Malia and Michelle Obama are applauded for wearing to the White House functions, showing midriff, shoulders, spaghetti straps, et cetera, and we chastise our students for wearing those same outfits, it would appear as if we have lost the plot. Critics of change to the dress code claim that the learning environment can never be purely reflective of modern social trends, especially in terms of how we dress. I say, why not? Are we not the ones who can make that change? Is that not why we are gathered here this evening? What a dress code that mandates students to cover their private areas, as is socially mandated, not meet both the standards of academic acceptability and social acceptability? The idea that a square inch of shoulder skin is irreparably damaging to the learning environment is not only archaic, but psychologically harmful. I would like to close by posing a question to every board member and policymaker in this room. If it is within your power to make changes today that will create a better tomorrow, why shouldn't you start now? Thank you.
Typically, we don't have any applause. But thank you so much, Mr. DiMascio. I always love hearing from our students. It's so refreshing to hear the student perspective. Thank you to the JAGs for continuing to provide such an articulate student voice, month after month. Thank you very much. I do hope you'll stay as we embark on our two hours of public comment. We are now on to the public comment portion of our agenda. The School Board does welcome your comments on matters that are before the Board for consideration. It is not the Board's intent to respond this evening, but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask the audience, please refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When the green light in front of me starts blinking, you will have a minute remaining. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds remaining. When it turns red and the buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the Board. Board Policy 2.26 provides for an orderly and efficient meeting without disruption by words or actions. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations for civil discourse. Any speaker or audience member that does not comply with these expectations will be subject to warning and removal from the meeting. As a reminder, in an effort to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19, we have placed hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes at the podium. We ask that each speaker wipe down the microphone and podium before they address the Board. The CDC does currently recommend that facial coverings are worn well in public settings. Therefore, we recommend that all attendees wear a facial covering during today's meeting. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted until 6:20 p.m. Thank you for taking the time to address the Board. Vice Chairman Will.
Madam Chair, we will start with Trudy Doring, followed by Denise Connors.
Thank you so very much for allowing us to be here tonight. I'm not a speaker, so I'm gonna speak from my heart. Looking back, remembering what we did in school. Our day started with a prayer and then the pledge of the flag. Our teacher let each one of us to read a verse in the Bible if you wanted. No one was forced. Once a week, we would all join in. We turned out okay. It didn't hurt us to give thanks. It didn't hurt us to pray. It didn't hurt us to pray. Matter of fact, it helped all of us to be better citizens. Look at the mess that we're in since we took prayer out of school. Why not give the kids a voice to choose whether to pray or not? Please start giving our kids a breath of fresh air in the classroom. Please consider prayer. Back in school, I thank you for listening to me. As a grandmother and a great-grandmother, I really wish that you would consider thinking about putting prayer back in school. Thank you all. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Doring.
Please no applause. I'm going to need everyone to follow decorum. Please refrain from audible applause. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Doring. Next, we'll have Denise Connors, followed by Gussie Killings.
Thank you, Jacksonville School Board. We have a flyer here, and it just says, "Prayer Back in School." We have T-shirts that says, "Prayer Back in School." This is very serious to us. My name is Denise James Connors. And today, we are all awakening to the brightness of the same sun. There is no national religion, but all people pray. In our legislation, our Senate, our House, our representative, there is prayer. When all presidents are sworn in, they all pray, or they ask everyone to bow their heads in a solemn prayer. So, the Prayer Back in School Committee is asking the questions. One, why prayer is not in all schools in Florida? Why? Two, what is the argument about prayer? It's just a question. What is the argument about prayer? As I address the Duval School Board and our four hundreds of other counties in Florida, my mind is on the children. Just last month, we all prayed the young lady or the girl be found. And yes, our prayers were answered. We all rejoiced in an individual home and whispered, "Thank God." Let me express what prayer is not. It's not an expression of religion or denomination. Prayer back in school is essential. Our children are suffering, both mentally and spiritually. So, let's start at home. Let's start in our community, in our churches, and in our schools with prayer. Prayer back in school is about the children of all ages. Prayer restores hope, brings joy, and renews self-worth. Also, hope to remove or destroy bullying and discrimination, and also gun violence. I believe prayer will have some positive impact for teachers and students. There is no national religion, but all people pray. Many say out of habit, "Oh, my God." And nowadays, they say, "OMG, OMG, OMG." And it's just a regular thing. Who is the God they're talking about? Have mercy on me, a phrase many people say. Deliver me in time of trouble. We also pray that God will help the scientists find a vaccine for COVID-19. And yes, we found a cure for COVID-19.
Thank you, Ms. Connors. Next, we'll have Gussie Killings, followed by Kennedy Towns.
Greetings to Dr. Green and the Board. Good evening to everyone here. I'm an ambassador for Prayer Back in School. And the reason why I desire for prayer to be back in school is because of our youth. Any child, no matter where the child come from, they need to be founded on prayer because our nation was founded on prayer and belief in God itself. So, children need to understand what prayer is all about. It gives them a self-respect. It gives them an understanding that when they're being challenged, where to go. Instead of having a chaotic attitude, they'll have a calm attitude. They'll have a calm reaction to what's going on in surround. It'll cause them to think before they react. It'll cause them to reach out to an adult to tell them what's going on on the inside of them. It's called a relationship. And when they have a relationship with someone, they can build because the prayer has led them to a ledger of not being active into crime, running drugs, all sorts of things that are under the institution. You see what I'm saying? So, it'll bring them into a relative relationship, that they'll be kindred to everyone through their prayers. They'll understand that they're not the only ones that are suffering or going through anything that'll cause them to have a misunderstanding. They'll be able to interpret not only to themselves but again to someone else that will be able to help them in the time of their need. So, prayer is needed throughout the nation, in our schools, in our kindergartens, in our colleges, in our home. And most of all, it'll bring families back together in relationship because that's where it starts, at home.
Thank you, Ms. Killings.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Kennedy Towns, followed by Bob Rutter. And if folks could state their name for the record when they approach the mic.
Good evening. Good evening to the Duval County Public School Students Board, and good evening to students, faculty, and staff. My name is Kennedy Towns. And I'm here on behalf as a representative of Prayer Back in School. Growing up, we were taught in our household that prayer is an essential practice, a part of our lives. From small prayers when I was a young child to prayers that I pray now, being in college and the grades that I received this semester. My mother is the founder of this movement. Not only is she a mother, she is a wife, a pastor, a daughter, and a teacher of the Word of God. I believe that putting prayer back in school will not only help our students emotionally and mentally, but also spiritually. It will awaken their spiritual conscience. We are not only humans made of flesh, bones, and muscles, but we are also souls, spirits. I remember during this meeting, one of the board members mentioned the importance of mental awareness, mental health. And I do believe that our children are suffering mentally, emotionally. And I do believe putting prayer back in school will decrease the bullying. It will decrease the cyberbullying. It will decrease the many, many deaths, untimely deaths, that our children have faced and many parents have faced. So, as I conclude my statements, I urge you to please ponder in your hearts about putting prayer back in school. And you will see how much of an impact it will make, not only in District, not only in this city, not only in this state, but across the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Towns. Next, we'll have Bob Rutter, followed by Patricia Muniz.
Bob Rutter, proud member of the Northside Coalition and a radical from District 2. We are not a racist country. Senator Tim Scott, Vice President Kamala Harris, and President Joe Biden stated so this week. If this is to be true, we must stop calling ourselves racist, stop branding ourselves racist, and honoring racists of our past. We must not allow the lost cause to continue to change our racist mistakes into the noble cause. Thousands of citizens have listened and understand how these school boards, bridges, monuments, the county name, the city name have come to be. The education in the last couple of months of this city is astounding. I've seen more old-time members of this city saying, "I never knew that." I've seen two city council members on television who, four years ago, would have opposed these changes, say they supported. And one of these council members voted twice to keep the name Bedford Forest. And now, they support your cause. ShadCon, the Chamber of Commerce, and the business community are praying that we separate ourselves from Andrew Jackson. This brands our city internationally as a not-nice place. Andrew Jackson, every book, everything I've read, is a bum. And we continue. We need to change the school name. We need to change the county name, Duval. We need to change the city name if we want to bring international business and travel to this area of Florida. Only then can we become the bold city of the South. While the national spotlight is on us, Sixty Minutes is in town. We need to get this done this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutter. Next, we'll have Patricia Muniz, followed by Jay Morgan.
I'm Patricia Muniz. I think it's really disheartening that we have to question whether or not we should go through with the name change. These children are the future of our community, and the least we can do is show them respect. We're told power, and a school named after an individual like Robert E. Lee carries so much hate and negativity to our black and brown peers. School should be a safe place for learning and growing as people, but how can a space be safe when it's idolizing a man who not only fought for the right to own other humans, but in fact owned other humans and tortured them? Is this someone we want to honor? And I leave that up to the board members to decide. But if mental health is a priority, a school being named after a racist slave owner is definitely something that affects our students' mental health. So, this needs to be a priority as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Muniz. Next, we'll have Jay Morgan, followed by Claudia Liner.
Jay Morgan, I'm addressing the board members, and I'm no longer speaking to the general public because you will make the final decision for these predominantly black and brown schools. You have the power to dramatically change the individual's experience on so many levels. In the end, no matter if the votes say to or not to change the name, you have the power to change the name, and I urge you to do the right thing. And also, since you were speaking about mental health, I would just like to speak on that and say that in Duval County, you actually do have children who go to bed hungry at night and also don't have health insurance. And that's like literally, that affects a child's mental health. So, since it's Mental Health Awareness Month, I would just like to say that if a child goes to bed hungry or does not have access to health insurance or healthcare, that directly affects a child's mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Next, we have Claudia Liner, followed by John Warren.
Hi, my name is Claudia Liner. Today, I am here to leave you with one question to think about. And I'm actually going to make it really easy for you guys. The question is, as a board member, do you support racism? And at this point, I think we all know that changing the name isn't about anything else. Making black and brown students come up here and relive the trauma that they have gone through and they go through continuously is extremely selfish. They come up here and try to get you to understand their pain week after week, protest after protest. And I think we all know that the name of this school and schools should have been changed already. And now, again, to the board members, you and you only have the power to change this name. So, you should all change the, vote yes and say yes. We want to change the name. We want this, we want the schools to be a safe place for all children and all students. So, you should all vote yes to change the name.
Thank you, Ms. Liner. Next, we'll have John Warren, followed by Debbie Tribble.
My name is John Warren. And I believe that our youth are our future and that it is our responsibility to support them in every way we can. I believe that the students of today should not have to enter schools that were named for Confederates who not only owned slaves, but fought to maintain slavery. I have a master's degree in education from Fordham University. And our definition of curriculum was anything planned or permitted by the school for the students. This school board did not plan the names of these schools, but you can now make the decision to no longer permit those names to exist. Your action is part of the curriculum of Duval County. Now is the time to change the school names so that the students of today and tomorrow can create a proud and powerful legacy. I also believe that changing the school names is critical to the reputation of Jacksonville. The country is watching what we are doing here. And I urge you to do the right thing and change the school names. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Next, we'll have Debbie Tribble, followed by Ethan Evans.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Tribble. I'm a proud member of Northside Coalition of Jacksonville. I have one thing to say tonight. Stop playing games. Change your names. 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 Stop playing games. 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 Change your names. Stop playing games. Change your names. Stop playing games. Change your names. And then Ben Frazier's voice.
Stop playing games. Change your names.
Stop playing games. Change your names. Stop playing games. Change your names. Stop playing games. Change your names. Stop playing games. Change your names. Stop playing games. Change your names. Stop playing games. Change your names.
Thank you, Ms. Tribble. Next, we'll have Ethan Evans, followed by Melanie Marshall.
Hello, my name is Ethan Evans. A comment that I've found throughout these name-changing proceedings is reckoning with the names of those who considered other human beings lesser than them, both in their words and in their actions. The Confederacy was founded upon the very idea that blacks were inherently unequal to whites. Slaves who had earned their freedom in the North were officially considered contraband by Confederates and recaptured to be resold in the South, something that General Robert E. Lee participated in. He was even quoted in 1866, addressing Congress, saying, "I do not think that he, the black man, is as capable of acquiring knowledge as the white man is. Black people are an amiable social race. They will work briefly to earn their sustenance, but they are inclined to prolonged hard work. They fought for states- They fought for states' rights to continue whipping, shackling, beating, mutilating, branding, and imprisoning slaves." Punishment was most often meted out in response to disobedience or perceived infractions, but masters and overseers sometimes abused slaves to assert dominance. Methods were even devised to administer lashings to pregnant women, as masters at the time were noted to dig a hole big enough for a woman's stomach to lie in and proceed with the lashings. Slaves were legally prohibited from getting an education while being enslaved. Jean Rebeau, along with the rest of the French Huguenots, tried to illegally claim what they thought was vacant land despite the fact that Timoquann tribes had beat them to the punch settling there around 3,000 B.C. Peaceful relations and trading were initially observed, but soon the French resorted to stealing food from the Timoquann. Colonizers like the French incorporated violence and enslavement against indigenous populations, seeing them as savage brutes who needed to be conquered through Christianity and by force. The Timoquann, who once had a population of 200,000 with unique cultures and multiple chiefdoms, were eventually made extinct. Andrew Jackson, as both a slave owner and a pro-slavery advocate, banned the distribution of abolitionist materials to appeal to voters who supported slavery. He is quoted in calling anti-slavery advocates "monsters that should atone for this wicked attempt with their lives." He has also profited greatly off the backs of an estimated 161 black men, women, and children. He also signed in the Indian Removal Act of 1830. Celebrating diversity and promoting equal human rights should be driving force for all schools in our country. But what does a school say about itself by honoring the names of people who inherently believed that those who didn't look like them were culturally and intellectually inferior? It's imperative for the Duval County school system to begin setting a better example for all of its students and faculty by changing the name of these schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Next, we'll have Melanie Marshall, followed by Leonard Marshall.
Hello, and thank you for taking our comments. My name is Melanie Marshall, I'm with the Northside Coalition of Jacksonville. I grew up in Riverside, and I know it doesn't sound like it, I've heard that all my life. To me, Confederate symbolism means blacks belong in the fields, women belong in the kitchen. When I see those symbols on public land, it tells me that my government supports that mentality and will make everyone they can pitch in to pay for it. It shows a strong desire to return to a time when the human spirit had to be constantly crushed to maintain a certain way of life. Back in time, when, just like today, blacks and women's want to vote and own land, but were denied and told they could not vote or own land because blacks and women aren't smart enough. Here's how I know that slavery was brutal and should never be downplayed. Most men are brought up to be tough, manly men, and that meant not being a sissy. Being a sissy means refusing to inflict harm on even the innocent. Even we sissy girls got put down for trying to be kind to lesser animals, and even just that little bit hurt every time. So yeah, people like inflicting pain, and government should not be supporting it at the very least. I got bullied in school, and no one helped because it wasn't big enough, usually. But it wasn't always there. It was always there waiting, excuse me, it was always there waiting for the chance to pounce. There's a lot of hate and violence out there, even directed at children and elderly. Please stop sanctioning hate and violence and cover-ups. Tell all the history, and let's make this some history that won't have to be made to look good in the future. And I like the idea of naming the schools after the regions of the town they're in. Some of those names are very nice, but the bottom line is, for me, public property should serve the public. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Next, we'll have Leonard Marshall, followed by Joe Ross.
Hello, members of the school board, and thank you for taking this time to hear the comments from the public. It was a couple of weekends back, I was down in Orlando going to Universal Studios, a wonderful, happy place. I was waiting in line for the Rocket Roller Coaster, and I struck up a conversation with the man who was behind me, a man of color who was from San Diego, California. I let him know that the day before I had spent the morning at Robert E. Lee High School holding a sign saying that we ought to change the name. His response was unremarkable, but quite astounding, well, emotional anyway. I didn't think there was a city out there that had the name of a Confederate general as part of their high school, their public high schools. He couldn't believe that there was a city out there that still allowed that. Now, as we go back to history, Robert E. Lee High School was opened and named in 1928. It was opened for whites only at the time. The rule of law at the time said, "Separate but equal," Jim Crow. That has since been done away with. Topeka verse the Brown, Brown verse Topeka Board of Education said, "No, separate is not equal." But the name stood, if the name still stands. People have already been talking up here, so I won't belabor the point. Robert E. Lee, although he might have been a brilliant tactician militarily, personally, and morally, he was bankrupt. Do we want to continue to send our kids of brown and, who are not white-skinned, let's put it that way, to a school where its name embodies the movement that most of us feel was wrong, it lost? It was the South, it was representative of slavery. It's up to you to decide. There's got to be other names more befitting of our public institutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Next, we'll have Joe Ross, followed by Rolando Graham. Joe Ross. Rolando Graham, I think it's Rolando Graham. Followed by Rozelle Van Nastran.
Thank you for your time, my name is Rolando Graham. I'm a proud member of Northside Coalition, and I'm a rough rider out of Jacksonville. All right, I've been listening to the background for quite a while since we've been having these debates. Less the individuals, everything. I know for a fact that this is a diverse board here, very thankful for seeing that. You know, I hope and I pray that y'all make the right decision on changing the name. Because I asked many people that I work with, I work on NSJACs as an aviation electrician. And there's a lot of people on the other side of the fence that would not let their kids go to a Malcolm X high. So with that being said, to have Robert E. Lee, Andrew Jackson, or anything like that should be a slap in the face to the other kids that's go there. So please make the right decision, change the name, stop playing games. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Next, we have Rozelle Van Nastran, followed by Jean McDonald.
Good evening, my name is Rozelle Van Nastran. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening in front of all of you. I live near Robert E. Lee High School, and you know, I've spoken, I've spoken many times before, I'm kind of tired. I'm sure you're tired of hearing all of us. And I just think it's shameful. You know, I'm kind of embarrassed to be from a city that still supports the Confederacy. It's embarrassing, and it's just so unnecessary. I think that people, it seems to me the people most invested in keeping this name, Robert E. Lee and the other names, they, first of all, they've posted all the yearbooks up until the year 1972. What happened in 1972? Why did they stop putting up the yearbooks? Oh, I get it. We all know that in 1972, that's when they desegregated the school. So now the yearbooks look a little different. So, you know, none of these things, I don't believe any of these things are accidental or incidental. And I really think we need to move forward here. You know, the whole country is acknowledging and coming to grips with our past and, you know, hurtful and old, you know, our old history, you know, we have to own it, and we have to move on. You know, I don't think there's anything to gain by keeping this name. Who is, who are we talking to? Who is it representing? Who loves it? Are the people that are there going to this school, are they honored by it? Are they proud of it? You know, do they feel good about it? There's 70% of the population of these public schools. You know, most of the people that have spoken against changing the name sent their children to private schools. We can see that, all you do is read the resident. They honor every copy of the local newspaper. They talk about Bowles, they talk about all the other private schools. You know, I want to see pictures of our local high school students. I want to hear about who graduated, I want to hear about their scholarships. I want to hear about where they're going to college. Really, come on, it's my school too. You know, I pay taxes for it, I'm proud to, you know, be part of it. I love the swim team, and the pool is always beautiful, and, you know, it's a beautiful school. And these kids are invisible. You know, we're not respecting them, we're not honoring them. I want to hear about them, I want to know their names. I want to know where they're going to college. You know, I don't really care about 1970, or 80, or even 90. Come on now, you know, come on, let's get with the program. Thank you for your time. Let's change the name.
Thank you, Ms. Van Nastran. Next, we have Jean McDonald, followed by Sean Eaton.
Good evening, my name is Jean McDonald. My views expressed here are my own and not of my employer. I'm a resident of 19 years, I've worked in emergency rooms for over 10, and I'm the mother of two children. I have personally reached out to multiple board members regarding COVID interventions and either received no response or the generic response of "we are following the guidance, rules, and regulations of the CDC." I was unable to bring in the graphics I prepared, but the image is titled "Understanding the Difference." It is made by the CDC and the National Institute of Health. It includes three different styles of medical-grade masks. Under the column for surgical mask and down to filtration, in bold it clearly states, "is not considered respiratory protection." Of note, cloth masks are not even included on this chart. Cloth masks are not fit-tested, they are made of any number of materials, they are not regulated, and do not have an effective filtration score. The omission of cloth masks on the chart is prudent because they already know the efficacy based on the surgical mask results. It does not provide respiratory protection. If we are truly following the CDC guidelines, why are we excluding this one? Why are we cherry-picking certain studies? We need to follow the evidence-based science. Surface spread is not documented. Temperature checks do not decrease transmission or discover more than a tiny fraction of cases. A simple dose of acetaminophen or ibuprofen taken prior to arrival easily disguises any fever. COVID interventions were discussed at a roundtable event with Governor Ron DeSantis and several other highly credentialed experts. Some of the highlights from that discussion included the following. Sweden had no social distancing and no masks, there were zero deaths among children. Children should not wear face masks, they don't need it for their protection, and they don't need it for protecting others. Wearing a mask for the general public is not evidence-based. Children are not super-spreaders. And the CDC published a study regarding the data on the influenza virus, which is similar in size to COVID, as of May 2020, and showed the mask did not stop the viral infection. If we are claiming that what we want is what's best for the children and to keep them safe, there was a recent article published by the First Coast News stating, "Wolson's Children Hospital has seen a 300% spike in emergency psychiatric admissions for children and teenagers since the start of the pandemic." If you're looking for an answer, if we're doing the right thing, I think this is one, and we should sound the alarm. There's, this so-called cure is exponentially worse than the disease, the disease that has a survival rate for children as high as 99.997%. And this only drops down by slight percentages with increased age. What would happen if we spoke more about their survival rates? Would it potentiate reassurance instead of so much fear? Additionally, there was a memo released by the Commissioner of Education. His recommendation was for the allowance of choice, the choice that a parent should have to determine any kind of medical intervention for their child. He also stated masks are of no remaining good at this point in our schools. The data shows us that the district's face-covering policies do not impact the spread of the virus. As an emergency room nurse, I have taken care of COVID patients, overdoses, and the severely depressed and suicidal. Trust me when I say, I see both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Please refrain from applause. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Sean Eaton, followed by Ben Frazier.
My name's Sean Eaton. Let's change these racist school names. The opposition almost agrees with us, they have yard signs. The best they could come up with is, "Now is not the time." So they recognize they should be changed, they just can't figure out a better slogan. I guess they didn't like these. Slave owners aren't that bad, because doing the right thing will cost tax dollars. I'm a racist, but too spineless to say it out loud. I love Traitors to America, they didn't like those. This vote, I don't really care, it's just going to tell me how racist my hometown is. It does not absolve y'all from y'all doing the right thing. I know I've heard about that whitewashed film about Lee that's being shown at Lee when nothing about Lee has ever been shown before, to my knowledge. I've heard about voting procedures changed on students. So y'all do the right thing. If you have to look at the numbers, you don't deserve to be in your position, and you should resign. Teacher appreciation, y'all talked about that, that's a good thing. Those who go above and beyond, role models, counselors. So let's show Amy Donofrio some appreciation. Past Teacher of the Year takes students to Harvard, wins an award from Harvard. Students become published authors. How many of us have been published? What'd y'all do to Amy? Teacher jail and an open-ended investigation. We don't even know what the charges are, y'all are still looking. I guess you're not very confident with what you have, sounds like a witch hunt to me. Now she's suing DCPS. As a taxpayer, let me thank you, how much is this going to cost me? I've read the documents submitted to the courts, it's pretty damning. Even if you win, you're wasting my money on lawyers. Hopefully, we've learned our lesson on railroading good teachers that meet DCPS-stated core beliefs. DCPS-stated core beliefs, excellence. All those awards, I think they count. Integrity, she wouldn't remove that flag because she knew it would hurt her students, and she knew she'd get in trouble for it. Innovation, she brought attorneys, district attorneys, judges into that classroom. Equity, she was giving young black men a voice. Collaboration, she collaborated with the students to write the evac curriculum. So let me just say it to your face, you're a bunch of hypocrites.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Next, we'll have Ben Frazier, followed by Wells Todd.
Good evening, my name is Ben Frazier, I'm the founder, president of Northside Coalition of Jacksonville. Our message is short, sweet, and to the point. Stop playing games, change the names. And you force our children, your students, that you claim you care so much about to go to schools named after serial killers, mass murderers, and people who sought to keep us in chains. You're playing quasi-intellectual word games with the dignity and self-esteem of our most precious resource. Publicly owned buildings should not be named in honor of people like Robert E. Lee, Jeff Davis, Jeff Stewart, Stonewall Jackson, Joe Finnegan, and Jean Rebeau. Collectively, they said, well, let's see here. Slavery was ordained by God. They sought to perpetuate slavery, the myth of white supremacy, Jean Rebeau and other white European colonists actually sought to steal and discover land that was already discovered and already owned by the Timoquans. Andrew Jackson, his claim to fame, the Trail of Tears. 100,000 Native Americans evicted from their own property by Andrew Jackson. Indian removal. Members of the Cherokee, the Muscogee, the Creek, the Choctaw, the Chickasaw, forcibly removed 5,000 miles. removed five thousand miles, sixty miles overland. The Trail of Tears covered nine states from Alabama to Oklahoma, not allowed to gather their belongings, white folks looted their homes on their departure. Four thousand people died of cold, hunger, starvation, and disease, marched them through rain, sleet, and snow. Men, women, and children of all ages driven like cattle. And who is the architect of this ethnic cleansing, this mass murder, this genocide? You guessed it, Andrew Jackson. Welcome to Jacksonville, Florida. Our message is short, simple, and to the point. Folks, stop playing games. Change the names. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Next we'll have Wells Todd followed by Michael Anderson.
Good evening, my name is Wells Todd. And I would take them down. I've been before you a number of times in the past couple of years, talking about the lack of education that exists in our schools about the history of the United States. These names that are on these schools were put on those schools by the United Daughters of the Confederacy. United Daughters of the Confederacy was an arm of the propaganda campaign called the Lost Cause. That propaganda campaign is deeply embedded in our society today. These people, these schools were named after and these statues that are up supported the violence that took place against millions of Africans. For this fact alone, the names should be changed and the statues should be removed. The burning and looting of entire black communities is reason enough to change the names of these schools. Denying African-Americans the right to accumulate wealth is reason enough to change the name of these schools and to take these statues down. This short list is enough to do that job. But if nothing else moves this city, we must understand that these schools do damage to the self-esteem of African-American youth. And that we cannot stand for. And we will continue to fight to remove these names and to take these statues down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Next we'll have Michael Anderson followed by Norman Abraham.
Good evening, my name is Michael Anderson. So, so, uh, uh, over the, sorry, I'm, I'm, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, 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 ESE presentation earlier really, really messed me up. Do, do, uh, do, uh, do, uh, uh, to, to the fact that basically, at, 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 as a child growing up in Duval County Public Schools in ESE classrooms in nineteen ninety-eight, whatever, all the way through, uh, uh, two thousand eight, I remember the, the, uh, of, of the, of basically being in these inclusion classrooms, being silenced for, for, uh, for, for, uh, for, for basically talking out of turn due to whatever, being bullied by, by, uh, by, uh, by, uh, by, 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 uh, 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 by, by, uh, several, uh, of my other classmates and teachers as well. And so, you know, of, of, uh, of, of this, you know, form of "we have it" or whatever the slogan is, I'm glad we have it now, but again, s- sometimes it is, uh, too little, too late for that. Now, now again, uh, uh, back, back, uh, uh, to the school name changes and, and again, uh, 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 I, I, I have been canvassing the basically neighborhoods of Jackson and Lee over the past several months, eh, 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 along with several other community members as well, and basically have been at the schools talking to students. I, I have heard based on the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the basically experiences of students saying, uh, you know, there is teachers saying racist remarks, there are, you know, folks being silenced. And again, back to when I was eight years old sitting in a classroom and a student or teacher told me to, you know, stop. All, all of that being said, we do not need to silence our students. Let them vote, let them change the name that they want to change it to. And again, for, for, uh, for, uh, for, for, uh, for, uh, for some of y'all who are going to be possibly running for office next year, whether that be State House or other, uh, stuff, we, we, we will re- remember in June when y'all do the final vote next month, what happens next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Hang on a second. I have had to make this reminder multiple times. We want to hear from you. We invite you all here, we want to hear your perspective and your opinions. Please be respectful of these protocols.
Thank you, Mr. And- Mr. Anderson. Now we'll have Norman Abraham followed by Clyde Anderson.
Thank you, my name is Norman Abraham. I appreciate coming to, before the board tonight and having the opportunity to express my thoughts on the name changes of these schools. There's been a lot of frustration throughout this whole process. I know it's not just from my perspective, but some of you have felt the same frustration. I knew from the beginning that the rules were stacked against those that want to keep the name and it would be difficult to get a level playing field. However, I feel that you, board members, will do the right thing and not let internal and external pressures decide your vote. When you look back, think of your questions that were unanswered and that you had to schedule additional workshops to get those answers. And the five community meetings were not conducted properly by letting non-stakeholders speak and disrupting these meetings. Also not allowing out-of-town alumni to vote was not fair. And letting third graders vote in the community was especially surprising and was never mentioned and that it was permissible through the whole process. Based on talking to some of you, I understand that it was never discussed or written anywhere that children in the third grade or higher would be community stakeholders on the high school level. Everyone thought that the community vote was a vote that meant something. As it turns out, it was never a vote. It was a poll. Poll was never mentioned. And even when you arrive to vote, it states voter entrance. I ask that this board sees that this was not a fair process but a tainted one. Ask yourself if allowing no out-of-town alumni to vote, but allowing third graders to vote, who does it benefit? Don't be a part of this unfair process and stand, and stand strong on what you were elected to do. And that is provide our students the best education for the dollar spent and not for wasting taxpayers' money. Keep the name, Robert E. Lee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Next we'll have Clyde Anderson followed by Pat Gier.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, for having us here. I could rise to speak primarily changing my point. I want to support the ladies that stood up here at front advocating prayer in, in schools. And while I'm here, I want to, want to say how much I disprove of the third graders receiving the propaganda to come up here and vote unless they are receiving both sides of the story. I don't believe that's the case. I had reservations about bringing a one-hundred-and-two-year-old lady to vote because I did not want it to be a media spectacle, but it sure did. But she enjoyed it. She cast her vote and it went very well. But to have third graders up here getting the propaganda that is one-sided and then hear these preaching that this is being done for our students, that this name change is being done for the benefit of the students, it's really hypocritical. Got one other thing to say. I graduated in nineteen sixty-two. I walked down the graduation aisle with a lady of color. Not just any lady of color, but she was black. If you care to look at the records, nineteen sixty-two, check it out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next we'll have Pat Gier followed by Hugh Blanton.
I think that's the first time I've done that. My name is Pat Gier. I'm a proud graduate of Robert E. Lee, class of nineteen sixty-seven. I'm a proud member of the community. And my kids went to public school, what a shame. I guess I shouldn't have let them go to public school. But they got a good education, uh, two from Ed Wythe, one from Stanton. They didn't go to Lee because I had moved out of the area for a while. Anyway, a couple of things. The highlight of the night was Abby. So that's my thought of the night. One comment that I have about a speaker, about, is it Jag? Is that the name of that Jag? Okay. Well, my hair would have been too long at Robert E. Lee in the years I was there. I actually got kicked out for, kicked out, when I say sent home, for not wearing socks with loafers. So the dress code was a little different then. The ladies, they would measure the hem line from the ground and make sure that the, the knees were covered. So I'm just saying, people, the way people dress is important and it's important in their future careers and it should be taught in the schools in my opinion. Talked about the one-hundred-and-two-year-old lady, I had the pleasure of watching her vote, cast her vote, or be there when she cast her vote. I don't understand at all how someone eight, eight or nine, I'm not sure of the age, went in to vote. But anyway, I think that's, makes you go hmm. Regarding money, we believe, I'm also a proud member of SaveTheSchoolNames.org. We believe that the amount estimated for changing the name of the school is understated and is closer to the five-hundred thousand that was spent for Nathan Bedford Forrest. The football field is in need of desperate repair or rebuild. Why can't we put some money into the school, the field out back of the school? There's no way to maintain it successfully, so there are prices in the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar range. It would be helpful to spend money on something like that. Talk about slave owners. Right now, the current slave owners are the ones who are, are dealing in human trafficking. Why isn't there an outcry for stopping human trafficking instead of coming against us because we're proud members of Robert E. Lee and coming against Robert E. Lee, who was a proud man on his own stature, was better than any of us? So my last thing is stop the waste, keep the name. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gier. Next we'll have Hugh Blanton followed by Walker Blanton.
Madam Chairwoman, School Board members, I'm Hugh Blanton. And I'd like to talk about not changing the names of all of these schools. You are all faced with a very important decision over the next few weeks, and I believe that you will give this matter the consideration it deserves. Throughout all of this process, I have not seen one bit of evidence that there has been damage to any students because of the names of the schools at present. I haven't seen any evidence to suggest that changing the names will improve the schools in any way, especially in guarding the education that is going on inside of them. What I have seen are numerous individuals trying to get the school names changed because they don't like them, for their own reasons, but simply because personally, they don't like them. They don't understand why they are there. They have friends and people across the country who don't understand why they are there and they want them changed. These individuals have banded together to try to impose their personal beliefs, their personal political convictions, on this community and more importantly, on these students. So while there has been no evidence that the name change will be of any benefit to the students of these schools, there is clear evidence that the process of changing the names will be expensive, very costly, and very divisive. I think all of you will agree that we have certainly seen that at community meetings and at the school board meetings. Clearly divisive and costly to change all these names. I know as school board members, you are protective of our resources, financial and otherwise. I know that you want to spend these resources in improving our schools, not, not wasteful. Your mission statement, as I know you're well aware, is excellence in the schools. I'm asking you to do your duty to apply excellence in these schools that have proven to be excellent and can only get better, and not to give in to political expediency or to give in to the personal political agenda of the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanton. Next we'll have Mr. Walker Blanton followed by Rob Lawrence.
How often do you get two of us back-to-back? We may be cousins. Oh, my name's Walker Blanton. I taught history at Jacksonville University for fifty-three years, my last class being last Thursday. My education was at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, Columbia University, University of Virginia, especially the South and Civil War. I brought with me a biography of Robert E. Lee, which for anyone who wants to know the man, you should read. Anything that refers to this man in scandalous, scurrilous terms is not about the man. The first chapter in the book, "Robert was always good." Had a tough time coming up with a father who had disgraced himself. He was educated at West Point, otherwise would probably would not have gone to college. He was an outstanding officer in the Mexican War. Winfield Scott said he's the finest officer I ever saw. He was offered command of the Union Armies, which he rejected because he had to stay with Virginia. Family, land, home, Virginia. He was the most beloved commander on either side during the war. Brilliant tactician. After the war, brilliant educator. A man who made the most of peace, as he had been a brilliant soldier in time of war. I do not think he is an unworthy person. I think he's a very worthy individual, a name that can be honored in fact. Now, in general, to change a name, to take down a monument, is not to enlighten but to obscure. What is better is to have the title, the monument, a discussion. Why? Why did they do it when they did it? When they named it or they built it? What was going on at that time? Tell us about that. Let's have a discussion about this. Let's learn. Let's learn more rather than turn another page for ignorance. But in this case, I'd recommend getting to know this man and getting to know a man who is indeed very, very worthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanton. Next we'll have Rob Lawrence followed by Christine Montefar.
Rob Lawrence, Robert E. Lee, class 1980. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. This process has been flawed from the start for over a year. Again, this is why you had all the workshops to work all the questions and the bugs out. It seems that nobody ever thought to look at the example of Westside High School change and all the mistakes that were made there, primarily listening to the Jacksonville Public Education Fund. They promised to pay for that, which they did not. They couldn't pay for one school. And now they're telling you they're going to pay for nine school name changes. I can't believe you're even taking their phone call. You should make them reimburse you for Westside High before you even talk to them about the rest. The flaws continued with the community meetings. These meetings were supposed to be for stakeholders to voice their opinions and their concerns. At least half the people at the Lee High School community meetings were non-stakeholders. And it was allowed to happen, not just once, but five meetings. They made a mockery out of the process. Last week, we started the voting process at Lee High School. Got a phone call early in the week from someone who said, hey, Rob, there's a third grader voting here. And I laughed. Of course, that wasn't the case. And I said, you know, surely it's a parent with their kid? Nope, they have a ballot and the kid is voting. Well, I got several other text messages, phone calls. Turns out, that was exactly the case. I was incredulous that this is happening. This vote has no credibility. Why are y'all even wasting the time with this? I understand the school board was not aware of this. You are now. And the question is, what are you going to do about it? Are you going to allow this charade to continue? It, I don't even know where to begin. I've got a lot more I'd like to say, but I just, I probably shouldn't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Next we'll have Christine Montefar followed by Brad Coon.
Hello, my name's Christine Montefar Hatfield. I'm with the Northside Coalition of Jacksonville. 250 years of slavery, 90 years of Jim Crow, 60 years of separate but equal, 35 years of racist housing policy, until we reckon with our compounding moral debts, America will never be whole. On June 9th, Mayor Curry said, I hear you, and if our history prevents us from reaching our full potential, then we need to take action. Make no mistake, there is no path to a peaceful and prosperous country without challenging and rejecting the lies of the Confederacy. We cannot allow this false narrative to continue at the expense of our youth. The name Robert E. Lee is symbolic of the violence that the black community has been forced to downplay for centuries. We cannot change hate, ignorance, or feelings of entitlement. That's up to you individually. But we are done kowtowing to this false history so others don't feel offended. We're here for those in our country who are being traumatized and permanently affected by these symbols of hate and oppression. These Confederate names were put there to honor those who tried to destroy America just over 100 years after we fought for our own independence. They create a hostile environment and continue to perpetuate the harmful and destructive messages that black and brown citizens are less worthy. It violates their civil rights to obtain an education free of brutality and intimidation. We failed with separate but equal. We failed when we allowed the losing side to narrate history and to make their sins and crimes more palatable for themselves. We failed when we didn't treat the traitors exactly the way they should have been, as enemies of the state. The collective mercy that was given to these brutal, inhumane traitors was wasted, and it has allowed the disease of hate and white supremacy to fester in this country. What impact do you think this has on the mental health of these children? As long as even one of these names' memorials and monuments stands, America cannot. Where would you like your country to put the monuments to the people that raped and kidnapped and beat and killed your ancestors? Where would you like those placed? They need to come down. The students don't owe you proof that it is affecting them. The level of arrogance and hypocrisy it takes to stand here and say, we're the ones who are the bullies and we're the ones with the agenda, it's enough. It's been well over hundreds of years with this, it's enough. Do the right thing, have some moral courage. That actually is what we need in this country, moral courage to do the right thing. And if you're offended by a third grader voting for their future, then nobody that graduated should be voting either. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montefar. Next we have Brad Coon followed by Darlin Coon.
Hi, my name is Brad Coon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. When I was a young man, I took a crayon and I wrote an obscenity in big block letters on the wall in my backyard. My community, namely my parents, voted that I should probably remove that obscenity from the wall in my backyard. So I, you know, protested, and I couldn't fully articulate why I had written it, but it was there and it made a statement that my community found offensive. So I began scrubbing this obscenity off the wall. The process I used to remove this obscenity was flawed. I meticulously traced the letters exactly as they were to create a big clean spot that was still an obscenity. But it didn't change the fact that this word needed to be removed from the wall. So it took me a little longer, it cost me a little more in sweat, but by the end of the day, there were four big block letters there that used to be an obscenity that had been effectively removed and my community had been restored to peace. There is no doubt, process aside, that this, these school names have become an obscenity. We can't fully articulate why they were put there, but we know why those names were put there. These names need to be removed. The community as a whole has said these names need to be removed. There is a nostalgic affinity by some people who look a lot like me, mostly, who are not offended by those words, but the majority of people are. The time has come. The past has been flawed, the process may have been flawed, but these names need to be removed. And we can't be talking semantics. We need to move ahead. We know what's right. We need to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coon. Next we have Darlin Coon followed by Grace De La Rosa.
Hello, I am Darlin Coon, a professor at UNF. I wrote a poem for you. The Bus Driver From Berlin. When the tour bus driver passed the empty parking space for the third time, circling the lot for some superior spot from which to disengorge his van, we impatient Americans tried to help, pointing and shouting to no avail. "Nine," he said quietly, and drove on. When a slot opened up just two spaces down and I waited for my friends to disembark, I ambled over, curious to see if a huge pothole or scattered thumbtacks had been the root of his reluctance, or was he superstitious in this spot numbered 13? Instead, I encountered a nondescript plaque embedded in the asphalt. Below my sneaker feet, the words announced in German and English, lay the bomb shelter-turned-bunker where Adolf Hitler and Eva Braun were married in 1945 and where they committed suicide the next day. From the parking lot, we walked to the memorials to the murdered Jews, the persecuted homosexuals, the victims of the euthanasia killings, and the murdered Sinti and Roma of Europe. And it struck me, the Germans had not erased history. The atrocities of the Nazis were remembered in museums and on small plaques on buildings and in parking lots that warned, this evil thing happened here. But it was the victims, not the perpetrators, who were honored with remembrance in memorials, buildings, gardens, and plants, their voices rising in ghostly chorus to sing, "Never again," as our broken hearts sang along. No Romas or Sintis are asked to vote at Heinrich Himmler Community Center. No sick or elderly Germans recuperate at Joseph Mingala Hospital. No taxes are paid at courthouses named for leaders of the Third Reich. No Jewish children are required to study at Reinhard Heidrick Elementary, Joseph Goebbels Middle School, nor Adolf Hitler High. Only in the United States are the honored dead, the ones who bought and sold human beings, the ones who wielded the cruel lash, the ones who rebelled against and seceded from this country we claim to love. Only in Jacksonville are the black and brown children we do love, required to study at elementary schools named for Joseph Finnegan in Stonewall Jackson, middle schools named for Jefferson Davis, Jeb Stuart, and Kirby Smith, and high schools named for Andrew Jackson, Jean Ribault, and Robert E. Lee. Change the names. Honor our living children, not a lost cause, nor our evil past. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coon. Next we'll have Grace De La Rosa followed by Seber Newsom III.
Thank you so much for having us and thank you for taking a moment to listen to me for one moment. I'm of color, and racism has nothing to do with color, it has everything to do with values. I'm coming to you as a holistic wellness consultant, communications major from UNF and a minor in psychology. I do a lot of civic duties, civic work in our city, a lot, with substance use disorder, mental health, mental health being the most important thing right now, especially with COVID going on. And what I keep hearing is what we're talking, what we're thinking about, but what about what the children are thinking about? This is why we're here. It's not about us, it's about the children. I worry about the future with our children, the pain that they keep accumulating, this amount of stress that we're all putting upon our children. We are the adults and we're acting like the children. A name cannot change the meaning of the building. However, I definitely don't want my children to be seeing something that reminds them of trauma day in and day out. I was an abused child. I didn't even know that it was abuse until just recently. I'm an abused military veteran wife. And it's no different than what the children are going to go through. And we have a moment to change that today. We're not talking about just the name. Even though I just said what I said, it's very difficult to sit here and listen and try to keep things logical when we're talking about children. They don't think logically. Love is not logical. I love our city very much. I love our city. We're only as strong as the weakest link. And all I hear are two sides fighting. Fighting for what? For money? We're going to lose a whole generation for money. Is that what it is? This is embarrassing. I'm sick and tired of hearing everybody flap their gums and not do a damn thing about it. I'm not here for any party. I'm here for me and the future generation, our children, because this country is getting sicker and sicker by the minute. And I'll be damned if I say our children get sicker.
Please refrain from any profanity.
I'm sorry.
I know you're passionate.
I apologize. I'm so grateful for you guys sitting here and listening to all of us. The children are the ones that are hurting, and we have to remember that. Okay? I know you guys will do the right thing. I just know it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa. Next we have Seber Newsom III followed by John Ray T.
Hello, my name is Seber Newsom III. My address is on file. I was born and raised in Jacksonville. I went to Reebok Junior High School and I was busting reins during desegregation in 1972. My father's a veteran. My great-grandfather and his five sons are veterans, and I'm a veteran. Here's a poll taken by Action News Jax. Seventy-eight percent of those polled said leave the names as they are, do not change them. Even if this is off by 10%, that's 68% said leave the names, do not change them. So when people say the community wants to change them, they're wrong. Here it is. The Northside Coalition are bullies. You saw them at the city council meeting, yelling and screaming, they got thrown out. That's what they do. They try to intimidate people. They don't intend to intimidate me, but they are bullies. They go in front of the school board out every Tuesday, threatening, intimidating. They go to where people are voting for the school names, the alumni. They're there to intimidate them. That's what they do. That's how they operate. There are so many streets and buildings and bridges and et cetera in Jacksonville, named after either Civil War generals or people who owned slaves. I spoke about it to a city council member, took me three minutes. This is the South. That's just the way it is. How, you know, how will these children survive in the real world if a school name scares them and intimidates them? In the past, election of the school board members was not a top priority for voters, but it will be when you offer reelection in the future, especially if you vote to change the school names and waste millions of tax dollars. And the last thing, if a name of school intimidates a child so much, what about their own last name? The black children didn't get that name from Africa, they got it from slave owners. So how are they going to live in a real world if they're so intimidated by a school name? That doesn't make sense. It's all a political agenda, it's part of the council culture. And Bob Rutter up there was speaking for Northside Jax, he's a perfect example, Northside Coalition. He said, oh, we're going to change the county name and the city name. What's next? North America? It was named after Amerigo Vespucci, a slave trader? Where does it end? Where does it stop? Y'all have to be the ones to stop it. You've got to have the courage and say enough to this council culture. Do it, you women up there, be strong. I plead you. Don't let, don't give in to them. This is just the beginning. You know that.
Thank you, Mr. Newsom. Next we'll have John Ray T. followed by Bobby O'Connor.
My name is John Ray T. and I want to thank you, first of all, as educators. My son was a product of JWJ Middle School, which was an excellent name, and Stanton High School is now a senior at FSU. I'm very proud of him and the man he's grown to become and to see him as a fine, educated man. I'm here in support of changing the school names to more suitable names based on place or leaders who represent science, education, liberty, or justice. A case for doing so has been eloquently made by others this evening. I'll make just one additional point. I'm not a historian, but I read. I have read that Robert E. Lee was offered command of the Union forces but turned it down. He did not choose to stand aside, but led an army to fight in defense of the economic right to treat people as property. This was his choice. This was a moral choice. Now, we as a community have a choice. The question is, what values and virtues do we want to promote? When, and I hope and pray it is when and not if, the Duval County Public School System makes this change, there will be a cost. People have spoken about it tonight. I'm not, I'm here not just with my voice and presence in support of this, but also pledge that once approved, I'll personally make a cash contribution to help defer the costs. And I hope many others will follow as a symbol of community support. I hope that we can be proud of the public school system's decision. Ask the educators, show how you as teachers and educators and administrators can drive change and make changes that we and future generations can be proud of. We as a society can change, we can transform, we can show the students that we as a society can overcome. We opened the meeting with a pledge of We open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Let us fulfill this pledge of liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray T. Next, we'll have Bobby O'Connor, followed by Wendy Collins.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. Tonight, I bring with you my name, Bobby O'Connor, and my credentials. I have a Master of Arts in Counseling Psych, and I have a retired mental health counselor license. A study in the Journal of Teaching and Learning done at UNC at Charlotte whose title, "Racial Microaggressions in African-American and Hispanic Students in Urban Schools: A Call for Culturally Affirming Education." First, from the study, a definition. Racial microaggression, a brief verbal, behavioral, or environmental indignities that communicate hostile, derogatory, denigrating, and hurtful messages to people of color. The study showed that microaggressions are, in fact, detrimental for students because of the damaging and long-term consequences for students. Further, it showed that a comprehensive culturally affirming education has the ability to positively shape the psychological, social, emotional, and intellectual development of African-American and Hispanic students. One of the major effects of microaggressions pertains to the health and well-being of students. Racial microaggressions assault students' psychological functioning through everyday behavioral and environmental encounters. Yet culturally affirming education can effectively combat racial microaggressions as they relate to the educational experiences of African-American and Hispanic students. Affirming education means that one's background, culture, and experiences are viewed with high regard and esteem. I contend that, based on this research and many others, which there's not time to speak of tonight, that it is past time to change the names of schools that honor the Confederacy. As you know, the vision for DCPS is that every student is inspired and prepared for success in college, in life, and career. And the first goal under this vision, as you know, is intentional focus on student achievement and well-being, and that the first strategy promotes student engagement through a safe, nurturing, and enriching learning environment. I contend, from this research and your own vision and strategies, that one of the ways that you can live up to your vision, your goals, and your strategies is to change the name of the schools that honor the Confederacy. We owe it to our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Next, we'll have Wendy Collins, followed by Sheila Jackson.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here today basically just to speak on the fact that, as some other people have actually said, that this is about the actual children that go to these schools, and the children that will be coming up going to these schools. I think it's really weird that we always want to empower our children, but some people are scared of the fact that we're allowing third graders that are going from feeder schools over to these schools actually be able to vote. I think it's great. We're getting them civically engaged to that. When they turn eighteen, they'll, they'll know what the voting process is. And this will give them a very good idea of what's going on. And after all, don't we want Andrew Jackson? Don't we want Robert E. Lee? Don't we want those schools to have the best and the brightest going forward? Well, the best and the brightest kids nowadays are very smart, and they know what they want. They also do a lot of research on their own. It's not like when we went to school back in the day. The only information we had about our history was actually the history books that we actually had in our classrooms. Sorry to say, though, I came down here to school when I was in the ninth grade. So, not ninth grade, I'm sorry, I was nine. So I was only in the fourth grade. I knew nothing about American history yet, because of course, it's not taught then. But the first thing I got asked by some of the students there, was I a rebel or was I a Yankee? This is 1978. So I went through busing. I had no idea what busing was. Just knew I had to ride a long way to the other side of town to go to school. These schools are permeated still to this day with racial problems. The names on the schools were put up and built at the time of Jim Crow era. The daughters of the Confederacy were not happy ladies. They had slaves in their dowry. We took them from them. They decided they were going to control the narrative and make sure that the slaves that we freed did not know anything about what they contributed to this country. And to this day, I still don't believe that the books you're using are doing that. So what do you give these young minority black children to look up to? Please change the names to something that actually symbolizes them.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Next, we'll have Sheila Jackson, followed by Sharice Porter.
Good evening. I actually wasn't sure what I was going to say. I do want to share with you that I grew up in Memphis, Tennessee, and I recall at about five years old, going downtown to Woolworth's. I'm telling my age, y'all. Going downtown to Woolworth's, Woolworth's, and wanting to go up to the counter to eat, and my mom telling me that I couldn't. And she told me later why we couldn't eat at that counter. And this was 1969. This was, things were actually supposed to have already started changing for us, right? But my point in telling you guys this is that we're talking about how this doesn't matter to the kids, how it's just a building with a name, and it's more than that. Because I learned about racism at five. I learned that my mom, even though we were supposed to be okay and be able to sit at that counter then, my mom still wasn't okay. My mom wanted to make sure that I was okay. She didn't want to possibly have us in a situation. And I remember my son, a couple of instances that have happened with him and me having to put on that hat that my mom put on. And this is my oldest son, who's 31 years old now. And I had to explain to him why something happened. So for you guys to say that the name doesn't matter, you're not considering our kids. For you guys to say it's just a building, it's just a name, you know? Nah, it's more than that. Because we know the history that comes with it. We know what this man stood for. So why should he be honored? Why should any of them be honored? They were racist. They wanted to keep people who looked like us in chains. I honestly feel like all of this is a farce. I feel like you guys know what needs to be done, and you just need to make the right decision. And if you say our children matter, prove to us that they matter to you. The money, the money doesn't matter. It's our children who do.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
We can find money for what matters for us. And our children should matter.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Next, we'll have Sharice Porter, followed by Tom McGuire.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I just want to make this perfectly clear. I am not with any organization or anything like that. I am a recent DCPS graduate, and that's how I am coming, speaking to you all today. Being a recent product of DCPS, going to Justina Road Elementary, when it was Justina Road Elementary, before it was recently changed to Grasp Academy. That's a different topic for a different day. I also attended Fort Caroline Middle School before it was, again, switched to a charter school. Again, that's a different topic for a different day. I graduated from Terry Parker High School. And for years, I have watched the injustices of this school board, not necessarily saying that you all are responsible for that, just in general, the school board. And when it comes to the liberties that should have been given to us, and I do mean that term very lightly, us after 1865, but of course, people that look like us weren't, and still aren't, privy to such privileges. I've watched people of this county on this board switch, ban, and fire teachers that have given us even a glimpse of hope for those privileges. But you know, what's really interesting for a person like me who was told about the prison-to-school pipeline in the fourth grade, it makes perfect sense. That makes sense. The reason why these people come out here and they say what they say and they do what they do. It makes, it makes perfect sense. You know, that prison-to-school, school-to-prison pipeline system from the fourth grade, you know, they start building prisons for young black men in the fourth grade. That, it makes perfect sense. Having names, having schools named after Confederates furthers this system psychologically imprisoning these young black kids before physically putting them anywhere. It makes perfect sense. Or God forbid, they never even make it to a jail cell, especially in today's America, but that's another conversation. And I do want to say that I personally had a teacher who was taken out of the school because of something that she was trying to do. You know, she was a Spanish teacher who fought to get African-American Studies at Terry Parker High School, and then she was then switched to Andrew Jackson High School. I don't even think she's still in Jacksonville anymore, but I just want to put that out there, that after she did these things for us, she was removed. Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Next, we'll have Tom McGuire, followed by Tim Miller.
Good evening. Many of you have heard me speak before. My name is Tom McGuire, for the record. And I'll start with this. The inexorable crush of current events has clearly shown that we cannot simply continue as we have. The common element of all the protests of the last year has been a cry for justice, equality, and inclusion. It's been simply a demand that we finally live up to the values that this country was founded on. The decisions that you make on these school names is a part of that. There is a clear divide here. On the one hand, you have the alumni, mired in the past and living on memories, while on the other hand, you have the current students charting their course in an uncertain world. We have heard the voices on both sides of the name change issue. The stakeholder voting will soon end. But between now and June, we need you to look deeply within yourselves and consider your charge as members of this school board. As a school board, you cannot directly help the alumni. Their success or failure has been in their own hands since graduation. While the same can soon be said of the current students. But if you send them off into the world knowing that their voices were heard, you will have given them something they can build on, something that the future students can appreciate and benefit from too. In upholding the values of every student, regardless of race, national origin, or economic status, you unlock their full potential and empower them to seek their own success. In changing these names, you can send a clear signal to all students that the era of racial inequality is finally coming to an end. The forward, that forward-looking legacy is the greatest gift the current students, the community, and you, the school board, can give them, these future students. You have an opportunity to show the future students that they do indeed live in a country that lives up to its ideals. Change the names. Thank you. And as I have little time, let me add a couple footnotes. First, this is not the South. This is the United States of America, as that flag clearly represents. And second, the cost of changing the name of Nathan Bedford Forrest is reliably estimated, reliably recorded, as being between $182,000 and $184,000. Nowhere close to the $500,000 that they would have you believe. Thank you so much. Change the names.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Next, we'll have Tim Miller, followed by April Carney.
Good evening. My name is Tim Miller. I actually wasn't planning on speaking this evening until I got an email about 10 o'clock last night from a teacher who was somewhat distressed. I'm just going to read excerpts from the email just directly. She said, "Hi there. Someone said I could share some concerns with you because I do fear repercussions. We were told we were getting a site coach for our CSS program. They called her our site coach, but she's not one, nor has she spent the time a site coach should on our program. The lack of support for our neediest program is horrible. Instead of a site coach or an admin going into a classroom in CSS when a substitute didn't pick up, they would just pull a pair from another classroom and have two pairs in a CSS class for the six-and-a-half-hour school day on at least four occasions. Our ESE teachers have been pulled to cover classes instead of splitting classes, causing students to miss services. One of our ESE teachers was being pulled to cover CSS so often, their children were rarely receiving services, yet they refused to reassign her caseload until last week, when they placed her in a CSS classroom full-time. Testing is ruling our school. So important that the entire school is on no movement to test one makeup DVHR student. Our kids, including pre-K and CSS, are not getting recess, and they are not eligible, they are not being able to live by a normal schedule almost daily because the entire school shuts down. SLPs can't pull students for services as their IEPs read, just to protect the testing environment. We had thought maybe some of our suffering was due to COVID, but we were told that other schools don't look like this. There are very few people who are happy or even comfortable this year. I know there's a lot of difficulty in several schools, but the genuine lack of concern for the staff is sad. We even had a speech at our last staff meeting about making sure we keep our complaints in-house. And she closes it by saying, "I'm truly scared for sending this email." I don't know who this teacher is. I've never, I've never met the person before. The name didn't sound familiar. But someone obviously told her to contact me to bring this to you. Okay, this is Mental Health Awareness Month. This can't continue. I mean, I've been up here for how many years now harping on this? We have to take care of our ESE students. ESE teachers, CSS site coaches, they're not universal people to pull when we need. They are there for a purpose, and they are there to support those children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next, we'll have April Carney, followed by Blake Harper.
Hello, my name is April Carney, and I am the mother of two daughters. And I've been in the DCPS school system now for six years. And I'm here to address the current executive order that Ron DeSantis signed yesterday regarding mask-wearing and how it's affecting our children at school. My youngest daughter is in fifth grade. She's going to middle school next year. These are her last three years. These are her last three weeks of school. This has been the hardest year we've had. She doesn't get to see her friends smile, she doesn't get to see her teachers smile. She doesn't get to see her other friends that are not in her classroom this year. She comes home with headaches, she's had two bouts of strep throat, she has contact dermatitis on her face. She's getting acne prematurely, she's not even going through puberty yet. It's very upsetting as a parent to see your child emotionally distraught because of a piece of cloth that's being forced to wear on their face when they don't have to wear it anywhere else in this state. I don't know about you guys, but I've always thought that a public school district was part of the government. To my knowledge, the Florida Department of Education reports to Governor Ron DeSantis. You're not a corporation, you're not a small business, you don't get to make those decisions. The CDC does not get to make those decisions for us. The executive order that was put in place gives us the opportunity to have a choice. If you'd like to wear the mask, please do so. If it makes you feel safer, please do so. But please don't discriminate against our children who have no voice. I am here for those children. They are, I can't even begin to tell you how many kids don't even want to go to school because they can't stand to wear the mask on their face. Not only does it deprive their brains of oxygen, but it makes them sick. Canker sores, sore throats, tooth decay. It also causes chronic stress. How are they supposed to sit in a room and take the FSA when they're constantly fiddling with a mask or something that's bothering them? Or my daughter who has to wear glasses, fogged up all the time and can't see? Or can't understand her teacher because she can't understand what she's saying through the mask? Until I see something in writing that says that you all are a separate entity and do not follow executive orders from our governor, I'm having a really difficult time with this. And I know that I'm not the only parent in this state. I'm talking for the whole state, not just Duval County. I happen to be privileged enough to run a group of over 500 Floridians who are showing up at every single school board meeting with the same concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Carney.
Thank you.
Next we have Blake Harper followed by Laura Hetmanek.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Blake Harper. I am a citizen of Duval County, this great country, the United States of America. Normally I have comments prepared before I come to a meeting, but wind up having to change those because of what I hear in the meeting. So I just decided to come today and just respond to what I hear in the meeting. First of all, I heard something about microaggressions, racial microaggressions specifically against blacks and Hispanics. Yet I was a victim of a microaggression in the last meeting. I would, first of all, the lady came up to me this evening and apologized, that's Rozelle. Where's Rozelle, she's still here? She apologized to me, and what did she do? When she was walking out to come up here and speak, she stomped on my feet as, because I sat next to her. But that definition of a microaggression doesn't apply to what happens to white people. Okay? I heard that gentleman there say that the cost of, of the Nathan B Bedford name change was $1,800 when your superintendent told us it was over $500,000 in black and white in an email to Seabrook Newsom. That's a lie! Shut up!
Hey, listen.
Anyway, so I, I'm, listen, I'm giving you facts and he has no right to interrupt. And I get my time.
Our decorum is not to identify people.
I'm identifying the lie that was spoken.
I'm asking you not to identify specific individuals.
The point I'm making is this, if we go back and look at these people who have come up here and what their overall agenda is. They wanted, they want to defund the police, they want to install citizens review boards, they wanted to go after our vital rights that are established by the, by the Constitution. And now they want to come in and they want to change the names. The fact that they want to change the names means they want to take us back to a time that, where there were problems. Because as I spoke here last time, in the 62 years I have walked this earth, a man by the name of Manning Johnson wrote a book about the reality that what they're trying to, what's trying to be done is trying to destroy this country through creating racial strife. We now know it as critical race theory. And the whole notion is that Martin Luther King doesn't have anything to say anymore about character being, taking precedence over, over color of skin. It's the color of skin and your color of skin itself, your life experiences completely destroys any objective facts. That's the bottom line. And you guys need to stand up to this, you need to recognize what's happening, the tyranny, oppression. You need to recognize that the more people push back, the louder and more bullying these people become.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Next we have Laura Hetmanek, followed by our last speaker of the night, Tess Perry.
Good evening. I'm Laura Hetmanek, thank you for having us tonight. As a parent of two young children, both elementary age, I want to express my concerns for them and all of our students wearing masks in school. I emailed both Lori Hershey and Dr. Green and appreciate both of their replies. However, I want to make sure that my concerns are made clear. Something I didn't write is I'm very proud as a Duval County parent of the way that everything was handled going back to school and I'm very happy that our kids are back in school full-time. Our children should not be wearing facial coverings of any sort, not in school, not on the playground, not in PE. In my emails to both women, I cited student, or studies of the dangers of masks being worn, breathing recycled air, endangering their brains and bodies, how these masks aren't necessary when outside, how they aren't that effective. Children are not the super spreaders or the ones that are spreading the virus. We speak of mental health as everyone has tonight and this is a huge mental health concern. Children can't grow socially, emotionally, and mentally with their faces covered all day long. They can't see the faces of teachers, their friends, or anyone. I won't go into the safety issues of child trafficking, but I would wager that his, that it has been made easier with faces being covered. We're muzzling our children and holding them back from speaking out and being strong children. To have children hyperventilating in PE and throwing up in their masks only to have their parents being called to pick them up for getting sick is just, is terrible. Getting lightheaded, dizzy, why do we want to subject them to this? Why do we want to continue to subject them to this? Students should definitely leave the masks off during PE and recess, there's no question. But they don't know that they can or they're too afraid to ask. I've requested that my daughter who has asthma not wear her mask while at PE and while at recess. And they've, they have complied and they have allowed her to do that, but other children aren't doing that. My husband and I are raising our children to be bold and brave and this issue is one that they have to be brave about. To question respectfully why they need to wear a mask and hide who they are, to quiet them and lose their individuality, to be forced behind a, forced to hide behind a piece of cloth and to silence them. While I realize that the school year is almost over and my request to make masks optional for the remainder of the school year was turned down, I'm urging the board to consider, especially after the governor and the state representative have said, to keep the masks off of our kids for the next school year. I cannot stress enough how we are doing more harm to and hurting our children by making them wear these masks and I want our children to thrive and grow. I've been so happy again with the way that things were handled since COVID. Please continue to handle this in a safe and smart manner and let our children and teachers return to school without masks, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hetmanek. Our last speaker of the night is Tess Perry. Okay, Ms. Hetmanek was our last speaker, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us tonight. That takes us to comments from parent organizations. Mr. Hawk and then Ms. Rogers.
Good evening. My name is Michael J. Hawk, I'm the District Advisory Council Chairperson. Chairperson Anderson and Dr. Green and all of the board members greet you. At our last District Advisory Council meeting, we had a very lively time. We did get word that the half-cent sales tax had brought in $6.6 million. And that our schools were being hardened as far as from virus as well as from villain. That, I'm trying to stay on course here. Rutland Pierce, Rutland Pearson is being worked on and that other projects are being started because of the half-cent sales tax and the funds that are flowing into the community. We are thankful for lobbyist Kim Miller doing the work that she is doing and watching closely one of the choice bills that is going through because it can pull on funding for the district. We're still, there were still members who had concern about the March 5th board meeting. But I believe today I did receive minutes that were up to date from that meeting, which I will disperse to the other members of the District Advisory Council. The highlight of the meeting, aside from Board Member Willie being there.
Always a highlight.
Was Ms. Tabitha Collins from Communications who made us aware that we have marketing that is beyond McMahon and Tate. Come on now, be witch. That we're out to crush the competition because there are people that are bidding for our students as well as for our dollars, private schools, charter schools, and so they have gotten together. And if your school has not been touched by their marketing genius, it will soon be touched. They showed us a couple of videos and things that they have going on. And we were impressed and we were pleased to know that Duval County is not just sitting by the wayside and letting the charter schools or the private schools siphon off all of our good students. With that also being said, we, the District Advisory Council under the leadership, Duval County Public Schools District Advisory Council under the leadership of Michael J. Hawk, who is the chairperson, we have adopted a resolution pursuant to Board Policy 5.9 dealing with the renaming of the schools. Starting with the history, there was a regular board meeting where Board Member Jones made a motion for the following schools to be renamed, Joseph Finnegan Elementary School, Stonewall Jackson Elementary School, Jefferson Davis Middle School, Kirby Smith Middle School, James E. Well Brown, AKA Jeb Stewart Middle School, Robert E. Lee. Also during a regular meeting on August 4th, 2020, Board Member Smith Juarez made a written request that the board accept the following schools for renaming as well, Andrew Jackson High School, Rebaugh, Jean Rebaugh High School, and Jean Rebaugh Middle School. There were community meetings that were held afterwards. From our careful evaluation and statements made at the community meeting, we say that whereas we do not desire to identify with those who staged an insurrection against the United States, whereas we are opposed to human trafficking, slavery, the ownership of human beings as property for the use of profit or any reason, whereas we do not identify with statements such as Jesus did not condemn slavery, it is, if there's any problems within the school, how long has it been? Predominantly African-American, don't be mad at us. It was the chiefs in Africa who sold you into slavery. Whereas we are opposed to the community members making threats to school board members. I thought it was very rich and this is not in my statement, that Mr. Seabrook III stood here and talked about bullying when he came to our community meeting and told you all that it would be very important for your families that you don't vote to change the names of other schools. Now therefore be it resolved that Duval County Public School District Advisory Council is in favor of renaming the public schools that are listed. Respectfully yours, Michael J. Hawk, Chairperson, DPS District Advisory Council. Now I was given some great advice by one of the board members and I probably should take it, but I'm not. And so it was good advice, it really was. But it was, the question I guess was raised, how can I stand up here and say things beyond and give my opinion? And I would say to those who have issue with it, do not contact the board. My email is DAC, DACCHAIR, C-H-A-I-R, 2017@gmail.com. The reason that I believe that I can stand here and do what I'm doing is because when Wise was the superintendent, I joined the school advisory council. I've been a part of the school advisory council as well as coming to the district advisory council meetings through Wise, through Pratt Daniels, through Vidi, through Willis, and now Dr. Green. I've not seen many of you at any of those meetings who are concerned about me being able to stand here and continue to say things or make my own comments. Those who were saying that they were having meetings and they were supposed to be stakeholders meeting, I'm sorry those meetings said "community." And anybody in the city of Jacksonville then is in the community and they're allowed to come to the meeting and state their opinion. So their opinions were stated. And so if you would like to have the time that I have, then I would advise you to join the SAC at whatever school you're involved in, be a part of the area advisory council, and then come to the district advisory council. Each one of my elections I was unopposed and unanimously selected. Now if I was ever opposed, I would have always stepped aside and allowed somebody else to take the place of me. So if you're that concerned as to why I stand here and kind of give my opinion, then join. And you can stand here and give your opinion and not have to deal with the green, the orange, and the blue. Thank you. If I'm in trouble, you can recall me.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk. Ms. Rogers from the PTA.
Just want to say how much I love Mr. Hawk, by the way. Good evening, Chairperson Anderson, school board members, Dr. Green, Teresa Rogers, President of the Duval County Council of PTAs and PTSSs, sharing on behalf of DCC PTA. This week, PTAs all over Duval County are celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week and doing what they can to make this an extra special week for our teachers. We are also winding our year down with a celebration of the hard work of our PTAs during our virtual Presidents and Principals event, May 13th. I would like to again remind everyone of PTA's strong support for the renaming of schools with culturally insensitive names. This is a position backed by Florida PTA and all of its constituent organizations. Anyone who considers themselves a child advocate has a responsibility to listen to what the very children we advocate for say, respect their diversity and experiences, and use our own voices to help speak up for them. We have a moral obligation to our children. to ensure that their schools are safe spaces. And that includes changing school names that do nothing but normalize stereotypes and reinforce systemic racism. How can we enable every child to reach their potential when they are surrounded by names and symbols reflective of racial hierarchy? How can that not leave our students feeling disempowered? How can that not lead to inequitable learning outcomes? When people know better, they do better. We cannot pretend we do not know better. Unless we stop memorializing Confederate figures and colonizers and change these school names, we are knowingly harming our children and harming our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Anybody else from a parent organization? Moving on to employee organizations. Anyone here from an employee organization? Then we are on to approval of minutes. That the Duval County School Board approve the minutes for the meetings listed in the agenda item. March 16th, 2021, Special Board Meeting. March 16th, 2021, Auditor Selection Committee Meeting. March 22nd, 2021, Subcommittee Meeting. March 23rd, 2021, Auditor Selection Committee Meeting. April 6th, 2021, Regular Board Meeting. April 13th, 2021, Auditor Selection Committee Meeting. April 19th, 2021, Subcommittee Meeting. April 20th, 2021, Auditor Selection Committee Meeting. I ask for a motion. Moved by Board Member Coker, seconded by Vice Chairman Willie. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your action, you have approved these minutes, seven to zero. Approval of Consent Agenda. Are there any items to be placed on the consent agenda? Or items for discussion? Okay, seeing none, I ask for a motion. Second. Moved by Board Member Joyce, seconded by Board Member Hershey. Any discussion? Call for your vote. By your action, you have approved the Consent Agenda, seven to zero. Moving on to Board Member Travel. That the Duval County School Board approve and confirm the travel listed below for official business of the district and that it complies with the rules of the State Board of Education. June 8th through 11th, 2021, Tampa, Florida, FSBA Summer Conference. Warren Jones. If there's anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Board Member Joyce, seconded by Board Member Hershey. Any discussion? Call for your vote. By your action, you have approved Board Member Jones to go to Tampa in June, seven to zero. Superintendent Travel, we're letting her out these days. That the Duval County School Board approve the following Superintendent Travel: April 26th, 2021, Ocala, Florida, for the FADS Meeting. A Marion County Regional Meeting. Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Board Member Hershey, seconded by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. We have approved this item, seven to zero. And that brings us to For the Record. Everyone's dodging eye contact. Mr. Jones, For the Record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I move to that we adjourn now? I'll be brief. I want to give a shout out to Dr. Stephen Richardson. He's Assistant Principal at Westside High School. He was recognized by Action News for his mentorship for several young men at that school as a former graduate of Forest High School. I'm not sorry, Westside, formerly Forest High School. He's changing and saving lives through his assistance and counsel to these students. He helped one student get a job with his brother, who was interested in culinary arts. Research also shows when students have positive minority role models, there's a lower referral rate for discipline and higher graduation rates. Also a shout out to Rain's track team, boys' track team, for winning the Gateway Conference Championship last month. They keep doing it. Also, several of us that were at the DA Extravaganza, and I just want to give those students a shout out for that outstanding performance of Rent. So much talent, so much talent. I mean, and there's some probably Oscar winners in that audience one day. Should have got some autographs. And lastly, congratulations to Renaya Davis, one of the first, if not the first WNBA draftee out of Jacksonville, Florida. She's outstanding. She finished high school, she was in the early college program. She was truly a student athlete. She finished high school with both a high school diploma and her A.A. degree.
At which school?
Rebaught.
Thank you.
I thought you was going to miss that. But anyway, thank you. To all the teachers, we wish them well. This is Teacher Appreciation Week. And we wish we could do more. But if those who are listening, if they can reach out to those teachers, it would be very appreciated. They do outstanding job, especially in this environment. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I'll jump over to here to Board Member Hershey.
I was trying not to look at you.
I know.
To see where we were going to go. I do want to echo Board Member Jones's comments about DA. It's always exciting to see. And the night we were there, it was rainy, it was hard to hear, but the show went on. It was great to stay to the end and see how it went. And I thank Chair Anderson for filling me in on the plot because I was kind of having a hard time, and after that, I got it. It was much better, so thank you for that. Some of us were able to attend the Read USA event last, I think it was in the past week or two. And that was really great. And tonight on the Consent Agenda, we just approved a partnership that I'm really excited about because it has that word "all" in it, where all elementary schools have an opportunity to participate in a book fair. If it's selected to be done by the principal and students will receive books. And reading is so important. And you know I'm just biting at the bit to share with you. Great news today. I did ask if they could do the video that was on the website so you could see it. Were you able to do that or not? Okay, yes. Let's watch it live. I was there this morning, bright and early. And it was a great event. Sound would be good.
Chancellor?
The chancellor there, that's Chancellor Olivia from the Department of Education and Dr. Green. And he's announcing to the students that Mr. Schmidt, the Vice Star Teacher of the Year for Duval County, has been selected as a semifinalist, the first in a long time. The Duval County will have a semifinalist for Teacher of the Year for the state at Mandarin High School. So it was a great event and just wanted to celebrate that tonight.
One of five semifinals.
Right, one of five, yes.
Wonderful. Did you have anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right, Board Member Pearson.
I had talented students written down, but anyway. Teacher Appreciation Week, I do want to give my thanks and support and gratitude to our teachers who have worked in this most unusual year. And I have, as I've said before, three students in DCPS and am profoundly grateful for those teachers who have taught and been patient with students this year. It's been an unusual year for the students as well. Under the category of talented students, I've had an opportunity to experience student talent at three of the high schools in District 3. One is at Douglas Anderson with the performance of Rent, which was very impressive. That in all regards, that the students built the set, they were doing the production and the lighting, and the performers in all regards was impressive. And that even with the rain coming down, the show went on, even when that meant having to take your spot in a puddle. And laying down in a puddle, I was watching to see if the stu... And they just went right. So very impressed with that and congratulations to them. Congratulations to Sandalwood High School, which I have been wearing my Sandalwood mask tonight for their 50th anniversary. And that is a great presence in our community for 50 years. They had a band concert, and I want to say a bands concert because they had several different bands, including a guitar. Ensemble. There, that was very cool. I've never seen that before. And the students were, I told them, they were really good. And so that was fun to be at. And the last was a production of The Wiz at Wolfson High School. And it was... The thing that I liked about it is Wolfson talks about having a family atmosphere. And this was their first real performance in many years of trying to build back a theater program. And so they had some gaps in different places and they were very creative. And so they pulled in the dance team to help with the dance numbers. And they pulled in the chorus to sing songs where they didn't have soloists for. And then the part that made me a little teary is they brought back a graduate from the class of 2020 to sing the solos that she would have sung last year had the performance not been canceled. And so she got to come back as an alum and sing the part that she didn't get to sing last year because the world shut down. And I loved that. And so that was very cool and just very fitting with the family atmosphere that the school says that they have. I also want to give a congratulations to the middle school swimmers who were swimming while we were meeting tonight to qualify for the city champs. And I have to give a special shout out to Julia Landon, College Preparatory and Leadership Development School, very long name. Their boys and girls took first in the Southern Division. And a cute little 7th grader has qualified in two relays and in an individual event. And I was here with y'all. But anyway. So with all of that, kind of the overall arching of all of that is I am so thankful that our students got to experience drama, band, theater, chorus, dance, and athletics this year. I'm so, so thankful that we were able to have our extracurricular element as part of our school experience for our students this year. And I'm so, so thankful for that. I will finish by saying it's May and it's our last full month of school. And I will tell whoever's listening, what I am telling to my own students is let's not finish just somehow, but let's finish triumphantly. We have exams to get through and of all kinds, and they mean different things to different students. But let's finish strong this school year and then really enjoy our summers. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Board Member Pearson. Board Member Coker.
So I'd like to echo the sentiments of my fellow board members that were at the DA Extravaganza. It was quite the night. I will say it was my first time in over a year of going to any type of arts event. And I didn't really even, I was not bothered by the rain. I was just so happy to hear the song and the dance, and it was a wonderful evening. That being said, we had some late breaking news right before the board meeting about an exciting announcement. Leadership Jax this year, for their annual celebration, is celebrating unsung heroes from COVID in our community. They picked six unsung heroes. And I am happy to announce that Jim Colbert, our Chief Information Officer, is one of the unsung heroes that will be celebrated in this year's... I'm not sure where he is, but wherever he is, thank you for all the work that you did during COVID. And I'm excited that you're going to get recognized for that. I want to thank Robin Faircloth, the SAC President and Principal Powell over at Grasp. Grasp is an incredibly unique, amazing school. I recently attended their SAC meeting. And what made it unique was I logged on and there were over 30 families that were attending the SAC meeting and fully engaged. And it just is a jewel in our district. And I'm just grateful to have so many parents that are working so hard to make that school a success. So thank you to them. Want to make sure I thank all of the parents and community members, staff members, and students who came out recently for a series of meetings in regards to Terry Parker's acceleration program. We are currently evaluating what that community would really want in the long run and what would keep students in that school. And I want to thank Principal Evan Daniels. He's an amazing leader. He's been an amazing leader for years. But for him to look to the future and see what really works for Arlington, I'm just really grateful and looking forward to their recommendations. I want to thank the superintendent for including all of us and the recent celebrations throughout our school district for our military students. I know a number of us were able to attend those events. I was able to go to New Berlin Elementary with Dr. Dana Krisner. And I will say, it was just over 200 students from military families were celebrated. There were more sparkly dresses and sparkly face masks. It was just an amazing event. Principal Crystal Lewis, I feel like I give her a shout out almost every single meeting, but she just did an amazing thing with the event. I left with a smile on my face, as did many others. I also had the opportunity with our superintendent to be at Fort Caroline Elementary School recently. Tax Watch, which is a statewide organization, each year basically recognizes three elementary principals, three middle school principals, and three high school principals across the state of Florida. They recognize them for movement of subgroups in fragile school settings. And I am thrilled to tell you all that Principal Violet Stovall is one of the elementary principals of the year for the state of Florida. And I will say, one of the really cool things about it was not only will she be recognized with a cool plaque and all that kind of good stuff, but what they did was they gave her a scholarship, prepaid Florida scholarship, to give to one of her 5th graders. So we were there and watched them give it to the child. It was an amazing event. And so thank you to Tax Watch for supporting our teacher, I mean our principals, and making that happen for this young 5th grader who now has college paid for. Got to like that. And then finally, just a huge thank you to our teachers for all they do. I started my career in Duval County as a 6th grade teacher at Landmark Middle School. And I have worked side by side with teachers throughout my entire, almost 30 years with the school district. And I... They, day in, day out, just make it happen. And we are an incredible school district because of the work that they do each and every day. And I am grateful to have started my career as a teacher and have been in this district with these teachers for as long as I have. So just thank you to them and take some time to celebrate yourselves and rejuvenate as well.
Thank you, Board Member Coker. Board Member Joyce.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. I, again, will be brief, just like Mr. Jones said. But I do want to highlight a couple of things that happened last month. The ladies at Florida Farm Bureau reached out to me and they wanted to provide meals to some of our students in need. And so I met with them on a Thursday and we put together these bags of meals. And they delivered them on Friday. I can tell you that we delivered 838 purple bags to 18 schools in my district. And it was the equivalent of 2,514 meals. And the highlight, I think, for the ladies at Farm Bureau was we ended up at Ed White High School during dismissal. And there's a special spot of, a special spot where the SLA buses load. And so we were just handing them out. And they got to see the joy and the excitement of the kids receiving their bag. And it was really special. So, but thank you to the ladies at Farm Bureau for providing this to the students in District 6. Another special event that I was able to attend... Another special event that I was able to attend was the First Annual Stillwell Bike Rodeo. And so this rodeo was specifically for our intellectually disabled, our hearing impaired and our physically impaired students. And so a couple of the teachers there, the SE teachers, put this together in partnership with Brooks Rehabilitation Center. All of the students received a free bike helmet. And Brooks brought bikes out for these students who, some of them have never been on a bike and had never ridden a bike. And there were bicycles that you moved with your hands and just bicycles that I had never seen before. But all of the students in those three programs were able to participate in the bicycle rodeo and it was phenomenal. And just to see the joy on their face. And again, shout out to Ms. Tisha for all that she's doing at Joseph Stillwell Military Academy of Leadership. I do want to also acknowledge the Venetia Elementary Military Child Ceremony that we, Board Member Pearson, and I got to attend that. And again, that again is something near and dear to my heart. My son is in the Air Force and my nephew is in the Army. And my nephew has three small children and they do travel around. And it's, you know, I don't think all of, we really understand the difficulties they go through with being children who are uprooted and placed in different cities throughout their childhood. And they, they lose friends, but they also gain a lot of other friends as well. So it was just exciting to see them dressed up in their dresses and so excited to get their popsicles and their coins that Mrs. Chapman had delivered to them. And then finally, I just want to, I want to acknowledge that this year has been a year like no other. And from last summer, when we talk about going back to school during COVID and teachers, and not just teachers, paraprofessionals and the work that our principals and our assistant principals had to do from getting us moved from, you know, Duval homeroom to some quasi-Duval homeroom, brick and mortar. And the plans change, and the plans change, you have to reschedule and reschedule. And then you have the paraprofessionals and you have the office clerical. That was just not one person. It took a team. And they were apprehensive and scared, but they did it because our kids needed to be at school. And so I just want to acknowledge that you have done amazing work this year and you have gone above and beyond. And we are almost done with this year. And hopefully, next year, when we come back to school, it'll be some more, more normal than it was this year. And so again, it's almost the end of the year. Congratulations to all of the faculty and staff at all of our, all of our schools in Duval County for the work that you did for our children this year.
Thank you, Board Member Joyce. Vice Chairman Willie.
All right. I'll just start with Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to every single teacher, both past and present, for all the work that you've done. Shout out to Ms. McDaniel, who was a teacher that took me under her wing when I was a first-year teacher. So many teachers in all of our lives that we just want to be thankful for. So thank you all of our teachers. Couple other quick thoughts, speaking of teachers. Shout out to Ms. Sonia Sams. She's a Gladys Pryor winner. She's a teacher over at Highlands Elementary School. Over 20 years of teaching in Title I schools. They had an amazing sort of celebration of her. And she received some money for that and some additional pieces too. So congratulations to Ms. Sams over at Highlands Elementary School. I also want to just thank a couple of our staff. Number one, if you have not seen the dashboard for the Halfpenny Sales Tax, I've gotten a lot of great comments about that. I mean, it's a, it's a well put together sort of piece that a lot of folks are already going to. I thought it was well done. Also, I got a chance to just witness some of the things that we're making history as a district. The African-American History Task Force, thank you, Ms. Krisnar, Mr. Reddick, for the work that you do there. There is a textbook, a digital textbook, coming out from our school district about African-American history. Like, unlike any other, we're, I think we're the first in the whole state, right? To be able to do this, create our own textbook, local history, that we are able to curate. So if you know folks who are historians or want to add artifacts to this, this is an opportunity to actually add to our history, add to the knowledge that our students have. And this is something that we should be shouting to the rooftops, so I'm very excited about that. Also, Reebok had their royal pageant, so I want to shout out the Mr. and Mrs. Reebok, Ashley Brown and Jeffrey Francis. But Ashley Brown is significant because she is now the queen. But she also is the student SAC representative at that school as well. So she's deeply involved in what's going on, so I wanted to give her a shout. And last, shout outs to the Jaguars. We're getting Trevor Lawrence. But more importantly, they actually, the Jags actually came to Long Branch and drafted all of, I think, the third graders and before draft day. And actually, it was a financial incentive, actually taught them about financial education. And I believe gave each of those third graders $100 to add to a bank account that they could invest and create generational wealth. So more importantly than Trevor, congrats to those kids. But also, Trevor thinks pretty cool too. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I'll start by reminding everyone, please wear green on May 6th. Don't forget, it is Children's Mental Health and Mental Health Awareness Week and Month. Certainly, I want to reiterate appreciation for our teachers. We are ever grateful. And the strength and resilience with which you have navigated this school year is nothing short of impressive. I want to say congratulations to Tammy Tally. I think we'll have an opportunity to recognize her in the coming months, but she was named the Most Outstanding Athletic Administrator of the Year for the state of Florida from the FIAA. And it's really exciting because I think we're hearing over and over again tonight how much Duval continues to lead the state. And I am really proud of that work. I'm really proud to be a part of this team. And I can't wait to continue to see what incredible things will come out of Duval. I wanted to circle back around and say thank you to Chartwells and Thompson for the scholarships that they provided for our students. It is incredible to be able to offer this opportunity. And so we can't do, a lot of people up here tonight have talked about our partners. And we can't do this work without the Village and the partners that wrap their hands around our babies and make sure that our community has highly educated, functional people to be our neighbors and partners in this community. So I want to say thank you to Captain Canfield from Naval Station Mayport for joining us at our Purple Up Celebration at Finnegan Elementary School. And kudos to the superintendent for kicking off this Military Month initiative and doing a Purple Up Day. It's so cool. Our children are often overlooked and under-recognized for the service that they provide to our community and to our country because their parents served. And it is not easy. And the schools that serve these children go above and beyond to accommodate those, the unique needs. And so it was wonderful to join them and get to celebrate them. Lastly, we are coming to the end of the renaming conversations. So I want to just say that I appreciate everyone for being involved. I appreciate the opportunity for the community to learn, to hear from one another, different perspectives. And I ask that as we move into our June meeting, that we continue to be respectful of each other, of our community, of our children, of this board, of this process. Because it's going to be an eventful night, I have no doubt. And I would just invite you all to be respectful. With that being said, read a great book this month, Frederick Baughman's Anxious People. It was, although it sounds sort of educational, it was, it was actually fiction. And a passage stood out for me. And I, so I'll close tonight with some words of wisdom from the book. If our past was all that defined us, we'd never be able to put up with ourselves. We need to be allowed to convince ourselves that we are more than mistakes we made yesterday. We are all of our next choices too, all of our tomorrows. And so with that, I ask for a motion, Twitter.
So move.
Notify Board Member Hershey, seconded by Board Member Joyce. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we adjourn.